All right. I am calling to order the meeting of the Newburyport Public School Committee for Tuesday, September 4th, 2018. Mrs. Kennedy, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Decanter?
Here.
Mr. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Menon?
Here.
Mayor Holliday?
Present.
Mr. Hawkeizer?
Here.
Mr. Redden?
Here.
Mr. Callahan?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Please stand for the last greetings.
Greetings, people of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We traditionally start our meeting with a period of public comment. It's an opportunity for anybody in the audience who has some short thoughts that they would like to briefly share with us. If you would just come to the front of the room, give us your name and your street so that we can get it in the minutes, and then speak two to three minutes, that would be really helpful. Again, this is an opportunity to comment to us, not usually in exchange of dialogue. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to share? Yes?
Hi, Mayor. My name is Christine Dougherty, 13 Purchase Street, and I was just popping in again. I've been here before, speaking on behalf of earlier start times. If the -- I'm sort of following along, but I'm not exactly sure where you are in the process, but I would like to just emphasize that our family would certainly appreciate that to be continued consideration, and if that's not something that certainly can happen in this year, because we've already started our year, I think I've emailed before suggesting that maybe the committee consider early start times for exam periods, and I think that might be helpful.
Later.
Excuse me, later. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, let's get them in there at 5:30. Later start times, thank you, for exam periods. I also wanted to thank new principal Wolf for his meetings this summer, and especially the ample time he gave everybody. I know lots of parents really appreciated having the opportunity to meet him this summer, but also to have lots of notice about when his meetings were, and also to thank him for hosting the Wednesday night meeting, which I feel was very responsive, so I wanted to just be on record that we've appreciated his communications. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
Hi, my name is Mariana Lynch, 5 Briggs Avenue. I'm here to bring up the topic of later start times, too, just trying to figure out where we're at, what the plan moving forward is, what the obstacles, and how we can best channel our energy to help move that forward.
We -- I will just make a very brief comment. We had a very useful conversation, sort of a lessons-learned conversation, about later start and about our effort to date. I think that there is going to be a reboot of that effort. We're going to be building some relationships. There are going to be a couple of other areas that we're going to be looking at as a way to move forward on conversations about extended day and later start. We haven't formalized that process yet, but we had a really good conversation about it as the school committee at our last meeting, that was a posted retreat that we had. So, it was last week, and it is not a subject that gets -- we don't get very far in our conversations about anything having to do with schools without bringing back that subject, so. So, I don't have anything formally that I can say, I can tell you that we just had a pretty good conversation about it, and I think we're going to try some different things to inform the community about where we're going. Any other?
I appreciate the school committee updating us last week in the workshop, and as, you know, we'll be talking later, it's a lot of, you know, these initiatives are tied within the strategic plan, and that's kind of, you know, what we've been talking about.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
Eric Keller from Jefferson Street. Stood here a couple of times last year, and wasn't planning on saying anything, but what you just said, I guess, made me think of a couple of things. One is, there's kind of a small group of parents here that comes and represents a pretty large group of parents that have put a ton of work into this. You guys put a ton of work into this. The schools put a ton of work into this. And to me, it didn't happen for a number of reasons. One, Susan Riccaro didn't want it to happen. The former principal of the high school didn't want it to happen. And so, a ton of work was put into it, and it was almost like a foregone conclusion that it wasn't going to happen, because we didn't have the two most important sponsors behind the whole process. So, I think it's important to get that out of the way early, so that we all don't go through what we went through last 18 months, which, to me, was some of these meetings where we'd come up with things to do, yet there's no action items and no follow-through. It just became kind of a waste of everyone's time. So, I hope the process is treated more seriously, and that it's a question of how we're going to do it, not if we're going to do it, because I think people have decided whether or not we should do it. But I'd be interested to know if that's not the case.
I can't speak for the school committee, but it's never not been a question for me of how do we do it. I don't think the issue is convincing people about the science. It's what are the logistics? What's the best way to do this in a way that brings everybody together and identifies what the concerns are and deals with them? So, again, that's pretty much what our conversation is framed with.
Hi, my name's Michelle Hickey, and I live at 61 Story Ave. And I am here to support the later start time for schools as well, and I haven't been to a meeting recently, and I wanted to see where you were at with the process, which you've just answered, you know, some of my questions, but I definitely think that that should be a high priority moving forward in actually taking action and making sure it does happen, because I know one of the meetings I did attend, it was stated that in like 10 to 15 years, it's going to be probably statewide kind of a law, just because of the science of -- that supports how important it is for the students to receive the proper amount of state. I also wanted to voice my dissatisfaction at the earlier start date, the pre-Labor Day start date. As a single working parent, the argument of, you know, kind of childcare and that sort of stuff, I have to deal with all of that, and I still really support and value my family time. My daughter has come home all -- I have a fourth grader. She came home just crying every day off the bus. She was so overheated. Even though her classroom was air-conditioned, it just did not make a pleasant experience, and I was hoping that moving forward, we could go back to the post-Labor Day start. I know that there's arguments on both sides. I don't really see the value of the pre-Labor Day start. Thank you.
Yep. Anything?
The Senate did pass a bill, and I will send it around to everybody on changing the start date, but that's just, you know, it's not -- doesn't mean that it's been approved and ongoing to the governor's desk for signature, but I thought it was a pretty good majority in the Senate that passed it on Friday. So, I'll track down that bill number and send it out to everybody, so it's a step in the right direction.
Did you actually do that? I didn't know. Never even did that.
Oh, yeah, it's been floating around out there, and I think there's enough parents and information that there are people reaching out to their legislatures and asking them to move this forward, because that certainly would resolve a lot of issues if it became a statewide law that high schools start at 8:30.
Oh, that. I thought you --
You meant start school. Start date. Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry. I didn't mean that. I meant in terms of start school later.
Yes.
Clarify.
I thought you were going to say after. New Hampshire has a bill currently saying that they can't start school before Labor Day.
Right.
And it's a tourism thing.
No, this was about start school later. Sorry. Thanks for the asking and clarifying.
California just passed theirs on Friday, going to the governor's desk. Great. I don't think we'll have too much difficulty beating the legislature on this one.
Hi.
My name's Amy Warshell. I live on Plummer Avenue. I have a fourth grade daughter, and I'm here to support the post-Labor Day start, and Michelle is very articulate, and I share her concerns and her desire. I, too, am a working mom, part-time, but I really value that time with my daughter, with my family. It's such a short summer. I like to look at the professional development days and having those start the week before, like a lot of towns do. For instance, Weston, some of the top performing schools in the state, having them sort of float around in November or March, I don't see that that's any more productive than front-loading them. I don't want to get where we're discounting the value of time with our family. We have 18 years before they are off, and, yeah, I know that there's some validity to the end of the school year not being so valuable, but I would counter that, that even if we started mid-August, by the time you hit Memorial Day, typically people are spent. Also, I'd like to touch upon what others have been saying with the start times. I'd like to know, kind of, let's keep that moving forward, and, you know, maybe there isn't a consensus, but let's just do it, whether that's flipping it, whether that's adding a half hour, whatever it takes, I think we should do it. Let's move forward. The science is irrefutable, so I'm pleased to hear that that is on the agenda. Thank you.
Any additional comments? Thank you very much. That's as much public comment.
Good evening, everybody, and Namaste from Nepal. I'm very much happy to be over here as a parent of my daughter, who is in Sharm El Amr. And in my experience, there is no aim for university students in Nepal. However, for the pre-K C or nursery, even one, they say, what would be your aim of life? It used to be said, but when they come after graduation in school or after graduation in university, there is no aim at all. Here, I found that has been crafted from grade nine. However, the efforts has been done a lot by new principal, and one of my colleagues also said that I had been meeting him in different meetings. He is doing his efforts through district public schools. My concern is, if students are focused only on athletics and they are not concerned about their academic excellencies, how do -- how does district public schools rate them and whether they will continuously qualify for athletics if they do not achieve their academic excellencies? Thank you very much.
Hobbie, you need to give us your full name.
Sorry. L V Thapa Lal Bahadur Thapa Khetri. That is why I said just L.
If you get a chance, could you just write it down?
Okay, yeah, I'll write it down there. And then, I stay in 140 High Street, Newburyport. Thank you.
Great. That's a lot of public comment, good public comment. We'll move into the consent agenda. Do we have any warrants, Mrs. Kennedy? Mr. Cole?
Thank you. I can try to do, Mrs. Kennedy, but that's not going to work out very well.
No.
I have four warrants. The first warrant, I moved up the following name bills in the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $2,665.01. Be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Not opposed.
The next warrant, I moved up the following name bills and payrolls in the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $52,464.14. Be approved for the city auditor to make payment and deduct the funds from the school's account. There is one conflict with Mr. Bruce Menon.
Second? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
One abstention.
The next warrant, I moved up the following name bills in the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $223,101.61. Be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None.
In the last warrant, I moved up the following name bills in the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $486,586.37. Be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you. We have a set of minutes from our eighth, 2018 business meeting. We have a motion on them. So moved. Second? Second? Any discussion of corrections, changes? Good job, Mrs. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? One abstention.
I was not here.
We have, next on the agenda, is our couple of overnight trips. Bruce, I need to approve the first bills from August. We didn't vote on them last night. We didn't. I thought it was October 5th. What was the date?
August 6th. Monday, August 6th.
We never voted on those. They didn't come out. It was a whole day.
Yeah. We'll check.
I have been instructed. We got them like the day. Okay. We have them on our list. All right. We have motion? So moved. Second? Any discussion? Addition, subtraction? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good standing. Isn't there? What overnight trips now? Sean, you want to introduce the folks who are going to be talking to us?
Sure. We'll start off with the International Cultural Club, and Ms. McHoney, could you come on up? This is a trip that will be going to England. I'll do this one first.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to first just introduce you to the student officers of the International Culture Club. We're an organization that teaches global education and global citizenship, and in part of that, we do trips. So, these are my two Olivias, Olivia Gretz and Olivia Silberio. And I just thought you might want to hear first from them why it is that they got involved in this trip, what's exciting them.
All right. Well, I'm really excited to go on the trip, because I've never been to any other country besides Canada. I haven't really experienced anything outside of like American life, and, I don't know, I saw this as a really good opportunity, especially since it's my senior year. It was kind of my last chance to do a trip like this.
And Olivia, could you share with our school committee something that you're hoping we need to bring back to -- with you from our trip, an experience or something?
Definitely inspiration. We're all artists, and we want to learn about cultures and how it can inspire us to create more art and pieces, so I really hope I can learn more about different cultures and how it can help me as an artist develop in the future.
And as part of the packet, you have the itinerary for the trip, so thank you for the detail. So, the trip will be during April vacation. We'll leave on the 11th and then return on Saturday, the 20th. We actually would only miss the half-day, the Friday half-day, because we leave right after school on the 11th, the way it looks like right now. So, there'd be minimal school missed, and they'll even have plenty of time to recover since Monday is a holiday for them. And so, they'll have two days that they'll be back, yet will have been gone for 10 days. So, it's a 10-day trip. Currently, we have 20 students signed up. We do have some space, and I'm going to be doing one last sort of recruitment later this month. We have a couple of students that are moving out of the district and out of state that are on the trip, so I want to try to replace them if it's possible. It's not necessary. We have all the students that we need. This trip is focusing on the arts and culture of England. We'll also be having an opportunity to learn about the history as well. In the handout, I think I did indicate some of the itinerary. We'll be spending a couple of days in London, where we're going to be doing some hands-on art workshops, and those are in the process of being developed. So, there'll be some visual arts and some theater workshops. Students can pick and choose what they would like to participate in. Then we'll have an eight-day travel time, where we'll travel to places like Stonehenge, Bath, Stafford upon Avon, which is the home of Shakespeare, and we'll go to Oxford, because after all, the Great Hall of Hogwarts is there. And also get to visit the university in general to learn about that great institution. The trip is pretty much all-inclusive. Students will have only some minimal extra expenses, like their lunches and stuff like that, and of course, spending money. And we've already started our fundraising. We've already raised enough money to pay for our bus to Logan and Bath, and had money left over to start towards our raising of money for tips, so those are our group fundraisers. All the students are going to be able to participate in individual fundraisers, such as selling ads for the play, sponsorship drives, and things like this, so that they can raise money to help offset their own individual costs as well. And I have started some reach-out for some additional funds to help students in need as well. Last year, we were able to provide four students, one with a full ride, and three students with -- one with half-off, and two with about 25% off. I did that all myself. I would love to see some way that the district could somehow provide for this kind of an opportunity more. Any questions you might have?
Questions or comments? Captain?
I'm looking at the application being split, or estimated student cost, is it $3,200 or?
$3,200, yes. And then they'll have some miscellaneous expenses, like their lunch. That was the same, that's a little bit less than China, but we do have, England will cost a little more for the tips, so we're fundraising for that. It'll cost them more for their lunch, and it'll cost more for their spending money, so I do expect them to end up spending about the same amount as the China trip in the end.
What is your expected chaperone-to-student ratio?
We are going right now with a chaperone ratio of seven, but we, when we went to France and Spain, we did a chaperone ratio of eight. So, that's one of the ways I can actually generate some opportunities for a student. We're provided from EF Tours, which is a tour company, a chaperone space for every six students, but they allow us leeway within that, so we've gone with a ratio of seven or eight, and that can provide a three-spot for a student if I have an extra six kids. So, say I have, right now, this is going to be, we have three chaperones set, and I have a fourth one as a possibility if we do get the other couple of students. I want a few extra students beyond, so I can help that, use that to help a student in need.
What kind of preparation will the chaperones have?
So, what happens with the International Cultural Club, our after-school operation, is that we meet once a month in the evenings with both students and with parents, and the chaperones come to most of those meetings, although not necessarily all. During that time, beforehand, we plan out these meetings, which we focus on learning about the country we're traveling around, learning how to travel safely, learning how to deal with the particular culture we're going to be in, learning about our papers and processes and that. The England trip, I actually, all the chaperones are experienced chaperones that have taken students on international trips before. Usually, I try to take one chaperone that's not had that experience before, because one of my goals is to go across the curriculum with the chaperones to also instill this experience for teachers, too, so that they can maybe bring it into their curriculum, this idea of global education. But in this trip, it's an art-directed focus trip, so the chaperones are Lisa Zaleski, Stephanie Williams, myself. We all took students to Italy, as you know, and as well as possibly Mary Rakowski. She's the fourth one that I have lined up.
Additional comments? Sean, did you say it was a great trip?
It's going to be. We actually are probably going to be meeting with an actress who's on the House of, Game of Thrones? Game of Thrones, which we've already made the connection, and it's just whether if she's going to be in London that time or not. That would be cool.
My comment is that I have always traditionally supported these trips, international trips, and England is one that I particularly like to support. I went to school for a year in England, in the National Black Glory Program when I was first in college, so I think it's great. We have a play at the Firehouse at the end of the month that's about Major John Andre who's buried in Westminster Abbey. I think this is great. Do I have a motion to approve? Does that move?
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Done. Enjoy yourself.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes. And that leads us to our next overnight trip. And the alternative on that first trip, Mr. Rakowski's actually taken students to New York City. I'd like to have him come up and --
Mr. Smith's here, but that's all right.
Apparently, able-bodied Phil and Andrew Smith.
I'd like to move here.
Yeah. One of the art teachers as well, Andrew Smith, I hear at the high school, and I'm proud to have with me two future world shakers in our National Art Honor Society. I have Katie Mead, our president, and Gillian Gray as well. And I'm going to, so we're here presenting our intent, as you know, for our, again, a New York City trip, and that's a three-day trip that we're looking at at the end of April, I believe. It's the 26th, 27th, and 28th, and that would mean we're missing the 26th out of school. But it's always been a great trip. I'm thrilled to be a part of it, and I'm going to let these guys get a little spiel, but I'm happy to answer any questions myself.
As Mr. Smith said, Katie and I are both officers of the National Art Honor Society at our school. We've enjoyed both being in this institution, to be able to meet different people and to explore different areas of art that we don't normally have and always have the opportunity to do during the school day, but we've joined this program, and we love going to New York City every year. I'm the vice president of the Honor Society, and while we're in New York City, we have the opportunity to go to a variety of different museums where we're able to see the art we are learning about in class or in seeing digitally, but we get to see it in real life, and that's super important, because you don't have the opportunities here to see it that you do in a big city, and you can't see a Picasso in real life every day. You can't see it, Monet, every day in real life. So, it's really cool to have that opportunity to go with the society and learn more about it in a hands-on environment. And every year, we go to typically three major art museums, and I've personally been on this trip a few times before, but the exhibits are constantly changing. We're constantly exposed to new mediums, new exhibits, as I said before. And I was just telling Mr. Smith before, we go to the Met every year, but every year, it's a completely different experience. You can get lost in there for hours, and I remember last year was the first time I finally got to go to the Egyptian exhibit, which was super cool, because it's a huge museum, and we don't have enough time to do it all in one trip, so it's great that we go back every year and we're constantly.
Another amazing aspect of the trip that I think is one of my favorite parts, aside from seeing all the major museums, which is amazing, we also get to be exposed to different forms of art, such as going to a Broadway show every year, which is always a super cool experience, super fun. And another thing, we saw an exhibit at the Cooper Hewitt Museum last year, which was a STEAM exhibit, which is STEM with art incorporated into it, which is really cool to see, not only like traditional paintings and whatnot at the Met, we got to see like exhibits that had signs incorporated into art and vice versa. We got to see like exhibits that had signs incorporated into art and vice versa, art incorporated into signs, which is amazing. And the whole trip is funded by the National Art Honor Society. We do a lot of fundraising throughout the year. We have our art auction, which is December 1st this year at the Art Association in downtown Newburyport.
And you guys are all invited to.
Yes, definitely.
We would love to see any and all of you there. You'll have a guaranteed fun time.
It's a really cool way for our students to like showcase and open up their art in a real gallery setting. And we also have another fundraiser, the Flatbread Fundraiser at Flatbreds in Amesbury, which is tentatively December 18th. So that should raise a lot of money.
Those are big ones for us, particularly our auction.
Any questions?
Have you decided on a Broadway show yet? That one's still in flux. We like to talk to the theater group here and their, you know, ears on the street, so to speak. But it will be something new and something that they're definitely going to be taking away as a positive experience.
Well, I think the question that we always ask are for students who don't have the funds. So I don't know if in the past, in your past trips, you were able to cover some of the students.
Yes, of course. That's a number of times we were always mindful of that. Every situation's a little bit different, but yeah, we've been able to do that as needed. Again, our fundraising efforts are, there's probably going to be a couple more that we haven't mentioned that seem to pop up as we need to do. Shaw's fundraiser, that kind of thing. But yeah, we're always mindful of that and trying to help where we can.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Thank you.
Further questions? We have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Aye. Terrific. I just would like to thank Mr. Smith. So this summer, as I was exploring the building and I got to go downstairs, he was preparing his room way ahead of time and he found, right?
I had never left, actually.
He sleeps downstairs. But he found a, as driving by, he found this big shelving unit that he thought would be great to store artwork and he brought it in and he set that up downstairs. So it just shows you the dedication of our staff. People like Mr. Smith that put his heart and soul into teaching. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for presenting to us. Great. Next item on the agenda, I would turn over to Shaw.
Oh, okay, great. I'll just introduce Mr. Wolf. So as we all know, Mr. Wolf is new to Newburyport, like myself, and he got a head start in March where after he was appointed principal, he started his entry plan, working throughout from March all the way until September, meeting with a lot of stakeholders, students, parents, community members throughout those months. And we felt that this was actually perfect timing to have Mr. Wolf kind of present his entry plan and kind of present the findings of where he and his team are at and all the work he's already done with all of our students at the high school to really create an avenue for student voice and student input. And he's done, I think, a great job. And I'm going to, in my superintendent's report, talk about all the great things that we've done in opening week, but the students, as part of his entry plan, brought up, the students wanted more opportunity to recognize one another, to recognize the pregnant traditions at the high school and ended the week with a rally, a whole-school rally, which was just, it was a great, great event. And all 800 students on their way out, all had a big smile on their face. And I think it was a great, great week, the way you ended the week. They might have been smiling because I think they got out of school 10 minutes early, but that's. Other than that, so Mr. Wolf, our high school principal.
Thank you very much and thank you, members of the school committee, for having me here tonight. And actually, just to kind of jump off of that before we get into the presentation, Mr. Smith, who I wasn't sure of the protocol, if I was allowed to shout out or anything, but we had done an all-school rock-paper-scissors contest, which is all about just kind of building camaraderie and a sense of community. It's a real fun activity. And he was actually the champion of the tournament. So we had done it with the faculty at the first day with the teachers back, and then we did it across our advisory program throughout the week, and then we concluded it at the rally. So it was just a fun way and the kids loved it because he definitely, he built it up. It was exciting. So again, thank you and for the invitation to come tonight and just give an overview of the entry plan and just kind of some logistics of what I've been working on since being hired. And it was really great to be hired back in February because it really just allowed me to really think through steps that I should take, just so we can, you know, start the school year with a trajectory and kind of working towards some goals. And so Angela is going to be my remote control over there since we don't have one. But the outcomes that I'm hoping to accomplish tonight is to review the logistics of how I conducted the entry plan, provide a summary of what I learned, share structures that have been put in place as a result. But then one of the biggest pieces, which I know is a piece that we definitely need to work on, especially from what I had learned from the entry plan meetings, is really building a culture that's grounded in feedback and voice amongst the kids and the teachers. And so just to kind of give you some, just some numbers, or actually in terms of the sequence of events that I took on, if you just click it right there, I think it all pops up. So basically, three is kind of the magic number here. So where there was three questions that I entered into all of my entry plan meetings with, which are, what are your strengths, what do you feel the strengths are of Newburyport High School? What are the areas in which you feel it can grow? And then what are your hopes for the high school moving forward? And then those three questions transcended across all three groups. So faculty, staff, and administration, the students, and the parents. And then the idea of the entry plan was working with the administrative team in the summer, looking at the information collected from all three groups and seeing, all right, what are some areas that are trending that we can potentially focus on as we get into the school year? And so as far as the steps, so starting in March, I was able to sit down with Angela and Susan and other district administrative staff, Christina Gentili. And then I was able to start getting into the school just to kind of get a sense of different structures and routines that were in place. And then in April, we hit the ground running. And I do have to just extend a big thank you to Salem. They were very flexible as we negotiated my time in Salem, so being able to free me up. And they're a big reason why I was able to take the sleep, just in terms of instilling the confidence and understanding of leadership. And so in April, I was able to get in there and start meeting with teachers, staff, and student groups. And then in May, I was able to be a part of the youth council presentation when they did their, the results of their youth assets survey, which was awesome. And then I was able to participate in the first parent alliance meeting, which was great and really able to start kind of understanding some of the concerns from the parent level. And then in June, the meetings with the teachers and staff continued and student groups, but then also getting into classrooms as well. And then I was also realizing that it was difficult to get to a huge number of students. I did put together a survey and with the help of Lynn Cody, we had like well over 300 kids that participated in that to kind of give me a sense of where their thinking was at. And then this all led into the summer, which we actually heard about earlier, in terms of setting up with parent coffees. But then also realizing that not all parents may be able to make that. They had a survey that they were able to complete. And then at the same time, we still continued with the teacher and staff. But then as this all continued into July, there were clear areas of trends that were really just constantly coming to the top across all three groups. And so with the administrative team, you know, we decided, let's take a chance here and see if maybe we can get some teachers and kids to come in and talk about some of these areas and see what feedback they have in terms of areas that we, areas we may be able to focus on right at the start of the school year. And that was really, we ran a few protocols and, you know, just the feedback from both the kids and the teachers, which is very positive in terms of having kids at the table with, with the teachers, just kind of thinking through some of these areas. So there's definitely a practice that I want to make sure that we continue to employ. And I'll get into that in a little bit more. So as far as numbers are concerned, so 79 out of the 96 staff at the high school I've been able to meet with, one-on-one. So since the meeting started with them in April, with the students, we had 349 survey participants in approximately 100 groups. And then parents from across the summer, close to 100 participated in the summer coffees. And I do have to say, I did make a big rookie mistake by scheduling a meeting during the Fourth of July week. And so we know not to do that next year. I was like, oh, I hope people come in at some point. But I was very excited as the summer went on. We got a lot more participation, which was just super helpful, just really understanding a lot of the history around some of the dialogue that has been going on here in the district. And some of it pretty deep, that you know, that I, just as we move forward, trying to be sensitive to that as well. And then student-teacher feedback sessions. So we had 54 participants, which was really split between half kids and half teachers. And so that was really helpful in terms of starting to frame some of these things up. So as far as the strengths, you know, what I was able to do here was to take a lot of the buzzwords from the interviews and just throw them into an Excel spreadsheet just to see, you know, what things really just came up with the greatest frequency. And you can see just across all three groups, just, you know, the high quality of the students and the teachers. And then the other thing that was, and I do have to admit, just continues to blow me away, is just the strong sense of community and the support from the community. And then I heard a lot about traditions and Newburyport is a special place. These were all things that came up with just tremendous frequency. But the fact that I thought was just awesome, that students, community, and teachers all came up as very large, just says a lot about the school that I'm coming into, which I think is, I think we're just primed to really take it to the next level. If I can do the job of facilitating the right conversations at the high school level. And so hopefully, you know, with some of the actions as I learned from last week and then going into this week, some of the adjustments we make, I'm hoping that we can get there even sooner than I had actually anticipated because you can tell the kids are just primed for it. It's awesome. Okay. Oh, maybe it's a couple of clicks. Sometimes I overdo it on the presentation. So in terms of what was learned and areas to grow, so one of the big pieces is that, you know, I heard a lot from teacher interviews and student interviews, more so on our advisory program, where kids didn't really necessarily understand the purpose and it was inconsistent in terms of how it was implemented. So realizing that the purpose of our advisory program was somewhat unclear. The other piece is that accountability structures at the high school were either limited or unclear. And then the other piece, there was just need for structures that support all students having a voice at Newburyport High School. This one was an interesting one because in meeting with a lot of the student groups, one of the pieces that came up was they did talk about how there are, you know, there are students who can have a voice and they push their ideas up, but then sometimes those ideas just kind of, they go with it. But then, but with a whole faction of our students feeling like they never really had a say. And so that's been part of the thinking is how do we create structures where all kids feel like they do have a voice and their voice is heard? Maybe it doesn't always go their way, but they feel like there's a process that's in place for them to express their ideas. The other part, which also kind of contributed to our, how we just did a different approach to the start of the year, opportunities for celebration were needed across the school year. I did hear a lot about the Color Day, which just seems like there's a ton of energy. So the idea is just kind of get that going across the school year. So there's always just tremendous energy and kids are excited about school beyond what happens in the classroom. The other part, learning there's been a lot of changes over the schedule, or multiple changes, I should say, of the schedule over the past decade that have kind of impacted structures and kind of teacher thinking at the high school. And then some of the structures that are in place currently at the high school were put into place more so out of compliance. One of the things I did hear a lot through teacher interviews, well, we did that because NEAS told us we had to do it versus, you know, how does it really fit into our vision and mission and so that it's something that's meaningful? So that was a big learn, you know, as we continue to kind of process this out and put things in place that it is always tied to our purpose at the high school. Okay. So this all kind of then led to our August feedback sessions where we really kind of decided to focus on these four areas, the advisory, the study periods, the student leadership and voice, and student attendance. And then what I'm going to do in a little bit is just kind of go over with you what I did share with the students just about the entry plan, because we did see that it was important for us to establish some set of expectations at the start of the school year. But these were the questions that we posed to the 54 teachers and kids who came in over the summer and getting them to kind of help us think about what are some things that we can put in place. And I think the next slide kind of contributes to some of the actions that we did. So really trying to think through a plan that engages all stakeholders in the purpose of the advisory program. So that kind of puts some pressure on the admin team, well, what can we do that really does engage everybody? And so we invited the teachers that were part of doing some of the planning with the advisor and we did what's called a purpose protocol, just to practice it, to see how this would work, where it forces you to go through your mission statement and highlight words in which you feel should be a part of what our, whatever program you're trying to establish, what its purpose is in terms of meeting your mission. And so we got it down to three words, but then we did the same activity with our staff on opening day so that we could kind of get their input. And then the staff at our mid-September advisory day with the kids, they're going to do the same exact activity with the kids. So it'll really be, so school-wide, we're really going to establish what the purpose of advisory is, but totally grounded in the school's mission. So I'm very excited to get there. And that also, and that question there, just based off of the feedback from the teachers and the kids, we just had a different approach to the start of the school year. So we did a different type of schedule last week where the kids met in their advisories on Tuesday and Wednesday for an hour, where teachers ran icebreakers, you know, ran community building things. And then I did do grade-level meetings where we just kind of spoke about some elements of the entry plan, but then also some of the structures we were putting in place around school-wide expectations. Another one of the shifts where we got feedback was just the study halls, realizing that how the study halls had been set up, it was just, you could have 100, 110 kids in this room. And then, you know, they could all, once they signed in, they could all go to the library and do their study period. But from the feedback meetings, the entry plan meetings with teachers, with a lot more so teachers, just how are we really helping kids to manage their time? And so we kind of pushed that question on the feedback teams when they were there in early August. And so where we just kind of decided to go with this is just, we're going to do some opening and closing routines for the study period. So where kids are kind of thinking through goals in terms of how they use their time and then being able to reflect on that. And then the other part is that we also have some tools where the study hall teachers are able to better progress monitor student productivity. So with kids that are really sufficient at managing their time, you know, they can be off and running, but really being able to better identify students who are having a difficult time and then being able to intervene and provide much better support for those kids. So those are the structures that we've put in place there. But then the nice thing about it is it really does convert our study hall from the traditional study hall, which is just use, do whatever you want with your time, to more of a guided approach where kids are being more thoughtful and they're planning how they're using the time and the school is able to use some data to intervene with kids who are struggling to use their time where it becomes more guided. And so, and I know just in years past, the school has been kind of cited in terms of meaning it's 990 because of the study hall pieces. But this, and based off of the definition I've been reading in DESI, I feel that this really sets us up, you know, to really have a lot more flexibility with our time because it truly is about using data, intervening with kids who need a little bit more support, and providing a structure and then teachers equipped to give feedback. And, you know, as we move forward into years come, hopefully getting some upperclassmen who would commit to do their internship in a freshman or a sophomore study hall just to serve as tutors or supports. That's another kind of exciting place. And that's actually something else I forgot to mention is that another switch is we just, by assigning study halls to classrooms, we organize them by grade level, just realizing the needs of a freshman are very different than the needs of upper class. And Lynn Cody's been great, so she's got a curriculum that she's able to deliver in the night. the ninth grade. Study halls just around how to study is a big piece here. And then the other part, which I'm sure you probably have heard a lot about, is, you know, working to create some accountability structures. And so these were around the location accountability, better clarifying the electronics policy. So the electronics policy, we didn't really change, we just made it more clear for teachers and students, because it was just inconsistently being managed across the building. And then the other part was creating a layer of accountability for school tardiness. And just to kind of touch upon this one, this one was an interesting one, because this really transcended all three groups of people, in terms of teachers feeling frustrated just with the number of kids that were coming in tardy. And then even at the parent coffees, because I was talking about this, that this was something that came up a lot with the teachers, but then even some parents talking about, yeah, we feel that we have to battle with our kids, but then our kids tell us, well, nothing's going to happen to me at school. So there wasn't really clear levels of accountability. So it was clear to me that we needed to at least do something, at least to get started. But then the reality was, I didn't really want to dive into it if it really wasn't that significant of an issue. So we did, with the administrative team, just go in and look at past few years' worth of tardy data, and, you know, what we found was that 20% of the kids across the years have been, could be considered chronically tardy for school, which means they have more than 15 tardies across the school year, which is significant. So that said a lot. All right, we obviously have something going on here, so we need to at least have some level of accountability, which also at the same time puts pressure on the school to have a structure in place that allows us to intervene, realizing, you know, where we did decide to go with a detention system for now, but realizing that detentions do not necessarily work for all students, and really trying to find the right supports to meet the need of the student. And then the final piece here is the student and staff voice. What's exciting about moving the study halls out of this room, so this room now is free during the school day, which now allows us to really give a space for our student body. So, and I'll talk about what we're going to do, starting Thursday and Friday, just based off of the student concerns with the rules. But this, you know, because I really want to create an actual student government and become, you know, a First Amendment school, where there's just strong avenues for students to have a voice. You have your student government that's participating in the dialogue, based off of the feedback they're receiving from their peers. And so we're really primed to really get that going, and for kids just to really have a spot that they can use to solicit feedback from their peers. And so that'll be one of the pieces that we're going to work to do across the school year, is as we're having school-wide discussions, you know, where are the opportunities to actually have the kids come to the table with the teachers? So that we're really kind of looking towards the next step collaboratively, versus, you know, I'm at a staff meeting, we're talking about this issue, and then we're going to implement it. So really putting a structure in place that allows them to be a part of the problem solving, which ultimately is just a modeling, you know, 21st century skills, because it really is about collaborative practices and being able to model that. And the other important thing, really modeling for kids, what productive dialogue, not destructive dialogue. Go on to the next. So this is just kind of an overview of the presentation I gave to the kids, and I really, I think I've actually gone over it, a lot of it, so you could probably go through it a little bit quicker. But here's just a sample of the reflection tool that some of the teachers had created in response to the feedback sessions that happened in August. So where if you click, you can see the kids have a spot where they can create a goal for themselves, and then they, at the end of the period, they just kind of reflect, did I meet my goals? How am I going to use my time for the next, the next time I have a study period? And then you'll see this next one here, if you go one more. And then they identify, you know, do they have a need to use the library? So what Ms. Cody had put together are all the reasons that a person would actually come and use the library. It's like 17 or 18 different reasons that a student can indicate going to the library, even working in a small study group, or just needing a quiet place to read. And so what happens is the student creates their goal for the period, and then they identify, if they feel they need to use the library, they identify why, and then they receive permission from the study hall teacher to go and use the space. And then what we did do with the kids, and I feel that this is important to share with all of you, is we gave the kids a rationale, so versus, all right, we're not just doing these things, there's kind of a purpose behind this. And I do have to say, the rationale was, a lot of that came from the feedback sessions, because we did this post with, from the Carousel Feedback Activity, everybody's writing on these post-its, so there's all this great juicy stuff of information that you're just able to pull from. And so, oh, that's just the library use piece. And if you go to the next side, no, that's what I talked about in terms of the data we're able to collect. And then the next piece, oh, sorry, that's the routines, my bad. And then here's the why. And so the big reason here was really trying to get the kids to understand, it's all about how you use time. Because sometimes we think about, we have time, but it's what we do with it. And it's very easy nowadays, with a lot of the distractions that we have, to spend time versus using time. We felt that this quote really kind of said a lot. But then even going into the next slide, what we spoke about was, and you click again, it gives you the article. So this was an article in the Washington Post that was basically doing a, did it click? There it is. So this was two years ago, so basically giving a summary of Daniel Willingham's, a lot of his research out of UVA, really trying, where we have more kids going off into college, so there's usually the assumption that a lot of kids, and it is true, a lot of kids don't finish college, because they may not necessarily be able to afford it. But what this person had discovered out of UVA, that a big, another big reason why kids don't finish college, they don't know how to use their time. And so the article kind of gets into his research, just in terms of what he discovered, in terms of knowing how to study, but then also realizing that you come from high school, and then you go off to college, where, so high school where a lot of your time is structured, and then going off to college, and you have all of this time on your hands. And it's really about, how do I itemize and create goals for myself, so I am as productive as I can be? So here's the school tardiness, and again, this just kind of highlights that we were at 20% of the students being class, could be classified as being chronically tardy to school, and you can just keep clicking here. And then we did just set the goal, that we want to try to reduce this by 10%. And so then that did lead us, the next click, realizing that our how is really, you know, with the school. We did put a layer of accountability in, which was with students starting October 1st, realizing that the past practice has been, you know, you know, there has been the accountability not being so clear. So we're not starting the detentions until October 1st. So if a student is late from 7:30 to 7:45, they're serving a 15-minute detention. But then, you know, beyond that, right now, it's an hour detention. But then with each kid getting a, you know, we call it a bad hair day of course. So four tardies. And again, these are unexcused tardies, not excused tardies. And again, this is really just a baseline for us to kind of at least get a better handle on it, and then, you know, make adjustments as we need to. But then challenging the kids, too. If you have friends that you know who are late for school, send them a text at 6:30 in the morning. You know, there are things that you can do to try to help, you know, help us to achieve the 10%. All right, and then our next, and the why. And so these were some of the things that we got, again, out of the feedback session, just the healthy routines and habits, you know, what can I do differently the night before that might save me time in the morning, so I can get to school quicker? The readiness piece, the courtesy, because that was a big thing that I heard, and again, this also, at the last parent coffee, parents were talking about, and it must be such a distraction to first-tier classes, was one of the comments that I heard, a few, out of a few of the parents that were there. But then the other part that we were really trying to impart was just the positive branding, because it does say a lot when you're just, you're ready to go. And if you're, you know, in the future, when you're on your jobs, or whatever it is, I told a story about how I got called out by my family, you know, because I was just consistently late for family functions, and it was, it came across poorly. Until my dad told me something, I was like, all right, I get it, and I do what I need to do to be there on time, because it means a lot. All right. And then the electronics. Here we just worked to clarify the rule that was already in place, so just defining it as non-instructional time is the kid's time to be able to access their phones or whatever else. And then during instructional time, they're also able to use it at the discretion of the teacher, realizing there's tremendous value sometimes to their devices in terms of accessing apps for academic purposes. And then I think, and that was just further clarifying it, this leads up the why. And so this was just a quote that we'd found from Alexander Bell, that we felt just really kind of capped it off. You know, where the sun is always dispersed, you're not getting burnt, when you can focus the rays, you know, you produce a lot of heat. And that's what we want the students to be doing in the classroom. We don't want them distracted, you know, we want their focus on what's happening in the classroom. Oh, and then the last one is the location accountability. And so with this piece here, and Angela, you can click on the next piece. One of the big things that I heard across all three layers was just how uncomfortable just many students were to go and use the restroom during class room. A lot, mainly a lot because of, you know, vaping that might be going on. And so the structure that had been in place was a little bit more loose in terms of kids just being able to leave the class. They would sign out, but there was no control or management necessarily from the teacher level. So what we did decide to go with was using our school agenda books, which, you know, many schools do use, because they're designed for that purpose as well, is where the teacher just signs out on the, the student asks for permission to leave, to go to wherever, but the teacher, the teacher provides the permission, and then just signs off on the student leaving. Now, I also get that this may not resolve our issue, but at least it's a first step, we're thinking, in terms of helping us to at least have better management in that area. But here was the big thing that I feel that we just need to take on as a school community at the high school, is ultimately, you know, with these two questions, engaging our kids and our teachers, what does it mean to feel safe? But then the other question being just as important, what is everyone's responsibility to support that? So really understanding how, sometimes, my actions sometimes might make somebody else feel uncomfortable, right, or unwelcome. And so it's really understanding how what I might be doing might be impacting somebody else. And so that's really the dialogue that I think will probably have more meaningful impact on what we're trying to accomplish. Now, here was pieces of information that really came from the parents through the coffees, was just trying to find better ways for communication. So we did start a Twitter account, @NewburyportHS. Hopefully some of you will follow us. But it's just been a great way to push out some of the things that have been happening at the high school, even during the school day. We did a summer mailing that capitalized on just materials kids were going to be getting on the first two days, so parents would be aware. And then on Thursday, I was able to send home, just through the email, and then I also did a phone message, just kind of recapping the first week of school, in terms of everything that had gone on, obviously using the phone message, which actually seemed to work really well, because using the phone message seemed to get more parents for the coffee as well. We'll see how it goes tomorrow night, because I'm going to do a similar presentation on this for the parents tomorrow night. And I have a personal goal to increase participation in the Parent Alliance meeting. I was blown away in May when I sat in on that meeting, and it was just the dialogue that went on, the questions parents had, and they can be such a tremendous asset, you know, as we really work to strengthen Newburyport High School. And then, you know, recognizing that I also need to set up, where the Parent Alliance meetings happen in the evening, I feel that having some opportunities in the morning, maybe continuing the coffees, will also be helpful. And then also realizing we need to reflect on our website as well. All right, and then here's the piece with the student voice, and so just with how the students reacted to a lot of the new rules. So it really is kind of an opportunity. So one thing that we did share with the kids was that come October, we were going to engage in a school-wide dialogue, where we're going to be able to reflect on a lot of these new structures that we've put in place and make adjustments, because that's what life is about, is about, all right, how are we learning from this, and what do we need to tweak? But I think just in terms of how they responded, it's just an opportunity, let's just jump into this and go with it. So starting on Thursday of this week, we're going to have a school-wide brainwriting activity. So again, it's just another protocol. I met with some upperclassmen, upperclassmen this morning, and they're going to help to facilitate from the student level. But what's going to happen is during lunches, we'll have all of our four, our goals up here in this room, and teachers and kids will then be able to come in and participate in this protocol, where really it's kind of three things that we're asking them to do. And this is, again, another model of just productive dialogue. And so you see our emojis there. So the happy emoji is based off of the rule or the goal. They're writing, what do I appreciate about what we're trying to do? But then they have the sad face emoji, where they then write a statement about what concerns me about how you're going about it. And then the idea emoji, really, what's my solution? So I have my concern, but then what might be a way that we can go about this differently? And so then the idea is, it's just the opportunity to really launch into this piece, would be that then through our advisory, each teacher inviting, or I guess the advisories would nominate a student representative to come to a faculty meeting later in the month with their advisor, where we would then take all of this information, what tweaks do we need to make? But then hopefully what's going to be a much better process than at least what was perceived, is that this is a school-wide, school-wide thinking on how we kind of move forward here at the high school. All right, and this one, I just kind of decided to kind of bring this back in, and it's really only because of one of the late, in the, late in the summer meeting that Sean ran with all of the principals and the other administrators in the district, and he kept talking about Jim Collins' book, Good to Great. And I just found it was interesting that one of the words that did continue to come up was just the word "good," right? And so, so it just kind of got me to reflect a little bit, you know what? You know, what, you know, how do we really create a vision for the high school that propels us beyond the good? And that's kind of what I put in on this next slide here. And I was able to share this with the teachers last week, is ideally, you know, I think what we're on the path to become is really the model that other schools are striving towards in terms of preparing kids to be successful in the 21st century. And I did, you know, with the kids, I spoke about, you know, our goal is that when you're walking across the stage, and you're there, and you've just shaken the hand of the mayor, the first thing that comes into your head is, you know what, I did it, but I am ready, that I can take on any challenge that comes my way, because there's the academic stuff that happens in the classroom, but then there are these soft skills that are so powerful that our future leaders just need to be able to employ, because the problems they're going to be exposed to are going to be so much more complex than probably what we've experienced. And that, that's really the ultimate kind of thing that we're driving towards, and ideally kind of doing activities like I just described. It's just, again, just, it's a way to kind of model that process for the kids. And then just to kind of wrap it up here, just kind of my mindset in terms of thinking, and hopefully this will, you know, ideally this becomes the culture of the high school in terms of Steve Jobs, just his way of managing his company in terms of, yeah, it was about the product and getting the best product out, but his mentality, which kind of made him a little bit different of a CEO, let's push it out there and see what we learn. It doesn't have to be perfect, let's collect, let's have the structures in place to collect the information and then make the tweaks. And so that's just, that's a culture that we want to try to work towards at the high school, for the kids, for the administrative team, and, and the teachers. Is that nothing's necessarily etched in stone, everything is just kind of the next best step. And so that's it.
Thank you. I appreciate how thorough and comprehensive this is, to also give us, I think, some insight into what some of the challenges of the first couple of weeks have been. Does anybody have any feedback or questions?
I have a question. The 20%, tardy rate, and like something was happening, was the data showing that a lot of it was maybe in the winter, and it was like weird weather, traffic type stuff, kids driving here? Or is it other? It seems like a huge number of kids were getting late to school.
It is, and I do have to admit, we do need to go deeper into that. And then part of what I'm going to be working with Mike Testor, are just some better structures to really better track that information. Because the idea, and I know how it came across in terms of, you know, the students being, you know, upset about the new rule and everything, but the idea is, is getting to a point where we're just able to intervene and support kids faster, and recognizing that a detention is not going to work for every student, but also realizing there was to be... definitely a population in those numbers that were just coming in late because they couldn't. So trying to at least, you know, stop some of that. But the, the goal is to really get to the point where you can come up with plans, meet with families, and really work with the adjustment counselors to come up with the appropriate interventions that can be more effective.
I'm going to guess that some of it is because schools start so early.
Potentially, yeah, it's possible.
For some of the kids.
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not saying otherwise, so, yeah.
Thanks. Any other comments additional? We're having.
Mr. Wolf, I would just like to thank you for your, you know, I think Sean hit it on the head that you started, you were able to start with the support of the Salem School District that allowed you to begin sooner, so it gave you an advantage in terms of really getting into the school and starting this entry plan, you know, at an earlier rate. I'm not sure that I've heard this type of focus group and support with students and families and teachers. A lot of work is often done with teachers, but to include the student voice, I'm very pleased and impressed with that, and would ask that you also extend that to bringing them here. Because this is, I think, one of the things that, we don't have a student rep as we start our school committee this year. We need a student rep and, you know, or a couple, so they could share it, so we can always have someone, you know, representing the student voice on our committee. And they usually just give a quick update and then leave. Would rather have somebody who would like to, even though it would stay for some of our marathon sessions, but, you know, it would be nice to have their voice on some of the things that are being presented. And, you know, I applaud what you, you know, in schools, but opened a week, and look at what already you've been able to put together and present to us. I'm, I'm impressed. Thank you very much.
And just to kind of go off, and we'll definitely take care of that. And I think as we get a culture that's grounded in student voice, hopefully we will have tons of kids who will want to be able to sit in that spot over there. But I think just to say something about Newbury Port, it's just been totally embracing. The parents have been phenomenal, and, you know, we had just the conversations that have been going on over last week, but I had some parents that just reached right out to me, very thoughtful emails. We've met, it's just, it's just a productive dialogue that's gone on, which has been very informative to me. The kids, absolutely phenomenal, just their ability to construct arguments in a very thoughtful way, and not necessarily a reactionary way, just says even more about how primed the high school is to really go to that next level and really be an exemplary school for other schools in the state. I would love it, rather than going to some of these conferences where other schools are presenting, that it's Newbury Port High School, not the Wellesley or whatever else that are getting all the, the credit, that it's our school that's going and doing those presentations, and they're coming to see us, because we have something to offer. And I think they're just, if we can do it the right way, I think we can just take some great leaps.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Just a couple of thoughts and a couple of questions. You have proposed a lot of things here. Let me touch on the, the piece where you mentioned about guidance for studies and especially for the freshmen, and I think that's a really good idea. I think helping freshmen with study habits is really important. But I also want to, for you to consider the fact that there were some students that may have already developed some habits, and by asking them to make some changes or tweaks, as you call it, if they're juniors or seniors, may be more disruptive than you think. So I just want you to keep an open mind to that. You also mentioned about how you want everybody to help with the, everybody to help with, I guess, safety, I think it was? Yeah, here it is. This year, we will explore what is everyone's responsibility to support, and I'm assuming that's safety-related?
Correct.
Okay. So, and I would just encourage you to do this, and I've brought this to this meeting before, because a few years ago, we had a student who underwent some abuse in, in one of the elevators, and I just thought it was really important for staff, the high school, to determine what areas kids are vulnerable and to monitor those areas. You know, I think it's, monitoring, I think, is really important, eyesight supervision. And then the other thing, and I like how you're basically, I mean, you've dropped, I won't say dropped, but you've presented a lot of new things to the students, and I, I know you've had some reaction to it. I also think you have an opportunity come October to make some adjustments, if, if they're warranted. But I also just want to remind this committee here, our committee, if there's going to be changes to the handbook, I think those should be brought before the school committee for consideration and discussion and vote. I just think that's really important, and I think that you've probably experienced that in your Salem district. I know you've experienced it in Wilmington, going over handbooks. So I would just, you know, encourage to formalize that process as you get, you know, as you find more information. I know you're gonna, you got a big meeting tomorrow night, right?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So, good luck with that.
Oh, thank you.
And, you know, we'll, I'm sure we'll be talking more.
Yeah, no, definitely. And then just to kind of, I am, it'll be interesting to see where we go with this in terms of the school-wide discussion, because I have heard that on the study skills, you know, because ideally, you know, with kids who really do know how to manage their time and can demonstrate that, how can you be a little bit, you know, the goal would be to be flexible, rather than, because you don't want to give them more work to do when they can be using it forever.
And, you know, they could learn some new things too. I'm not saying that, but I just know, back in 2010, we went through some schedule changes here, and it really drove some students to the edge. Okay, it really did. They were like, homework got amended, things were getting overloaded, some kids were really, really having difficult times.
Okay.
And, and I'm not saying that's going to happen again, but I think, I think there has to be some awareness of it and, and, you know, do things in a balanced way that makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions?
Can we get a digital copy of this? Some PDF or whatever it is, can we send that?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have just a few comments and questions myself. To sort of follow up on what Steve said about the handbook changes coming to us, they would be coming to us anyway, but I wanted to reinforce something that Stephen sort of hinted at, and that is, when we see these changes presented to us, and they are backed up by conversation with staff and conversation with students, and they, these recommended changes are a product of dialogue that's very, very compelling, very compelling to us. So, so I would really encourage that, that process, and also let you know that it's a very valuable process to us when we see that. Just a technical question, for the study hall, you have them asking permission to use the library, and I assume the default is yes, you can use the library.
Yeah, for the most part, if they're following that library sheet, that indicates the reasons that they would use the library.
For the detention, you might, I might have missed it, but what are kids are actually doing during that detention? What, what are they doing?
So right now, just the thinking currently, and again, we'll see where we land after the school-wide discussion, but it'll just be your traditional detention, but we're also, I mean, ideally, and this was actually from the feedback sessions, you know, kids could also access a teacher in order to get some help with their work, but the idea is that they're still at least held somewhat accountable for the time missed.
I would comment on, on your point that you made about kids, 66% of kids leaving college for reasons other than financial, and the issue of study and executive function skills, in effect. And I have to say, that was the only part of the presentation that was disheartening to me, that we are getting kids at the high school level who somehow haven't learned how to study, haven't learned how to parse their time. Personally, you know, it's my opinion that we should be teaching those skills. I know that we are, but if we're getting so many kids who don't know how to do it, then we're not teaching as effectively as we could much earlier on in kids' academic careers. So, so I, that was disheartening to hear, and I'm glad that at least we're recognizing it. And then the last thing I would say is, what you're going to be exploring this year, I was really, really happy to see what is everyone's responsibility to support our conversation around safety, because that, to me, speaks to community, and I've always, whenever I use the phrase "community," it almost immediately triggers a conversation for me about restorative practices, that, that in fact, when you think about what is it that the community needs to do to support itself and to support people who are having challenges, that's a very restorative outlook, that, that says that people have an obligation to their community as well as the community to them. So that, that's very heartening to see that sort of really embedded in this conversation.
An important part, I agree.
Thank you.
No, thank all of you for your time.
The next item we have on the agenda is, is continuing our conversation or beginning our conversation about the committees that the school committee currently has. When we met on the 29th, we talked about finance as a committee that we're going to keep, we talked about policy as a committee that we're going to keep, the ad hoc superintendent evaluation committee is, is a committee that keeps, what, that leaves a couple of other committees that currently stand, one being the CIE Curriculum Instruction and Evaluation Committee, and this kind of amorphous.
Expectations.
Expectations, yeah, it's changed three times since I've been on that committee, expectations. I think we need to have a conversation about that, about what that committee has been doing, how we've been using it, whether it continues as is, as something that's useful for the school committee and for the district. And then there's that sort of overarching conversation, which we will move into a little bit later about communications, how we want to, how we want to approach that.
Join in.
And join in. Well, I never invited to join in, because it's the city council's committee that we serve on. So I, I'm, I'd like this to be more of just a conversation, what people's thoughts are.
I almost feel like we, we need to blow everything up and start with the, what do we really need? Answer that question. What do we need to be informed and be able to make good decisions? What do we really need to be able to support our administration? Those two measurements probably, you know, the two committees that you've already mentioned that we probably should continue fall within that, within that structure. We really do need to be, keep on top of policies and make sure that we're meeting what expectations are, meeting what community expectations are, et cetera. Our responsibility for approving the budget absolutely makes the, the finance committee On the what do we really need for both of those committees, we probably need a better structure to report out from committee and inform the school committee as a whole of what has happened in those things. I think both Steve and I produce reports, but usually it comes at the end of the meeting, and everybody's halfway checked out anyhow. And I don't know about you, Steve, but I certainly feel that, yeah, okay, I'll, I'll get this out and cover what I need to cover, and you probably do the same thing. I don't know that we're presenting the thought and analysis and deliberation that goes on at the committee effectively, so that everybody is informed, it's some of the thought process behind how we ended up, where we ended up, and why it's a good or bad idea to do what we're doing. Beyond that, I don't know. I think we do need something around that big issue of communication. We do need some kind of a structure that can enforce and facilitate strategies for communicating with all our stakeholders, our students, first and foremost, our parents, the community at large, faculty and staff of the school district. There are so many different audiences, and each one have a different need for information from us. One of the key, key things that we've identified in our, in our meetings is that we haven't done a very good job of establishing with each of those stakeholders what our role really is. And so therefore, we do get stuck in market basket or on the sideline of the athletic fields to be told about what, one individual student is having problems with one individual teacher. And our answer, of course, is always talk to the teacher. But, you know, I think there's, there's a need for education on that, and a need for education at the student level to know what we're all about, so that when, and I hope it happens often, and I think Sean hopes it happens often, when we have students that are actually presenting to us, like we had Katie and Jillian presenting to us today, the two Olivas presenting to us today, they truly recognize that this is an honor, this is a big thing, and that they are not only talking to those of us sitting around the table, but they're talking to the community. Or we talked earlier about having the students serve on the committee, again, it's a form of communication and the needs of understanding what our role is, so that they can participate. Our role isn't a recipient of the, of the school calendar. Our role is deliberation, it's understanding. And so I think putting some structure around that communication strategy and having some guidance around it might be something that I would consider useful. The CIE, I think, when you take a look at what we were expecting out of the CIE, it was all communication-related things also. Are we getting the information that we need out of changes that are going on in our curriculum, in our approach to instruction, in our assessment policies, in our evaluation? And I have the other, we want to give that under E, because I'm sure there's not 17 that would be appropriate there. So, is that folded into communication? Is part of it folded into communication? Part of it into policy? Part of it into finance, because it's budgetary? Would that make the finance discussions much more relevant if we're not only talking just the spreadsheet, but are talking about what we're doing with the money that we're actually spending, and the value that we're getting out of that? So I think that's where I begin to say, how do we tear it apart and then rebuild it to meet our needs? I've spoken far too long, but I wanted to provide at least a jumping off point.
Okay. Very helpful. Anybody else have any comments or thoughts?
Well, just along what Nick just said, I recall from about 10 years ago, when we were doing the superintendent search, we had put together a newsletter that really talked about trends in our district and every, all kinds of things going on, and I think it was really impressive, because it really detailed where we're at, what we needed, and, you know, and I think now that we have a strategic plan, I think there's just an opportunity to, to build that type of, you know, document. And if it goes out on a monthly basis, or, I mean, I think a monthly basis is a minimum frequency. And I think we, when Susan was here, we had, I know we talked about this before, and one of, I think I brought it up, that an effective way to have a communications, or get communications from our schools, have someone at each school be kind of responsible for that, you know, and I'm not, doesn't necessarily have to be a principal, but somewhere at each school, so that everybody shares and they're reporters to what's going on. So I think, you know, some, if you will, creative and school-based and fact-based reporting on, you know, what we're doing and, you know, parading out, you know, accomplishments is, is a really good way to go, and having a fairly regular frequency, I think, will help too.
Dave?
On all four, communications, I don't know that anything that you guys are talking about, though, falls under our purview. So I think we're tossing a lot of work at the schools, which, you know, Sean's nodding his head, spinning his, spinning his brain, but like, you know, as far as what we do, and back to the conversation about our committees, whether, like, how communication, like I've been saying, if we have a goal in the district to better communicate, what is the school commit, school committee going to communicate about? And with regards to... And with regards to, you know, CIE, and some of those, I think Angela's reported out to us, and a lot of those, we've actually come to the table with questions. So these are topics that have come up from us or from the community, from other conversations, sometimes very specific, like, I think we spent a number of months working on discussing the role of the new world language teacher and how that's going to play out. But, you know, as we've discussed a lot over the past couple of months, it's not really our role. So I think because of that, there's always been a sort of a flaw with follow-through, like, you know, whatever happens to those conversations, and it's not really our role to decide how those conversations get shaped. And we're definitely not at the table when those meetings are happening. So, you know, I'm a bit of a curriculum nerd, so I like going to the meetings, but it's not really our role. And so I think we have to figure out, what exactly do we want of this? Because I think a lot of the things we tend to do are interesting, but they're not actual school committee work. And so I think if we're willing to admit that, you know, that we find ourselves figuring out, well, what is the school committee work? And do we need four-hour meetings ever? Because a lot of this stuff, we just go through, and a lot of these meetings, we just go through. But I don't really have, you know, like the joint integrated example, they ask us a lot of questions, and the answers, and I said, you know, I said to you, I don't want to answer any of those questions. You guys could ask me that all day long, but I'm just going to send, move it forward then on to you, which is what I did today. So, you know, even that, I can tell them what we discussed in our last meeting, but they want to know, they really want a meeting with you.
Right.
Not with me.
Right.
So it's interesting to be there, again, because it's interesting to be there, but it's not, I don't really, I've never really known what our role is. Because we try to go and ask them questions, and they don't really want to talk to us. Nor do they have a ton of answers to those questions at the get-go. So, you know, I think it's a matter of how much are we going to be with our role and with what sort of information we need, you know, what to report out, what to question, what do we get to ask questions about, what's productive for us, you know, and how we're going to spend that kind of time.
Just forget what's happening.
You know, it's like...
It's amazing you don't figure out. It's my mother.
Are you trying to turn the volume?
I did turn the volume on.
It's ringing here.
I did turn the volume on.
It's Bruce, but you didn't turn the volume off.
I just turned it back on and now it's on.
And I guess, you know, where I stand on all of this, you know, policy, budget, superintendent, those are the three things we're supposed to be doing. So if something we're going to be doing breaches budget, like adding a teacher or changing a schedule, that we need to do some sort of policy, some sort of budget work, I don't know if we need to, like, say, hey, we need an ad hoc, like, maybe keep fourth Monday of the month for a working meeting, like, instead of a CIE meeting, maybe it's an ad hoc, whatever's coming up, you know, intermittently throughout the year, we should be tracking Sean's progress towards goals. Or maybe we need to talk about something that might come up, but if we don't, I'm also a huge fan of not meeting just because we used to have in those committees.
That's helpful. That's very helpful. Thoughts, Andy?
I have really appreciated the dialogue from three of you so far because these are areas that I have always struggled with on the school committee in terms of, you know, there's very specific subcommittees of the city council, they have very specific tasks, things are sent to their committees to be reviewed, you know, by motion of the committee, where these are committees that we have just carried because of tradition, or they go away for a while, then we bring them back. I think that you're absolutely right, that our major function is finance, policy, and the superintendent. So those are the three committees that are, I think, are essential. Join Ed, it's a city council meeting, but it is information flow, and it has helped a lot because there, in past history, has been, you know, really not a lot of interest on the part of the city council in the kind of relationship that has built over the last several years with the school committee. And I think it's made a strong difference. I'd like to see us really, because I don't know how much more policy work has to happen now because the policy group did outstanding work in terms of finally getting policies all updated, and we're all actually waiting for our brand-new policy books. So I don't know how much more work in policy has to happen. I'm just curious about that.
What happens now probably isn't as frequent as we had to do it before, or as intensive as we had to do it before. But on a regular basis, if you take a look at the reports that come out of mask of what's changing in state policy and what is required now, changes in wording to policy. We just talked about the fact that the student handbook, any changes to the student handbook are, in fact, a change to policy, so need to come to us as well. So there is stuff that keeps coming. Plus, there are other issues that have come up that we want to talk about and we want to say, okay, do we need to have something in place? What would that look like? You know, we talked about, you know, cell phone use. We've talked about, you know, expectations for response to emails. We've talked about, these are all things that are sort of percolating and are coming up, you know, around athletics, there are a whole series of things like that. So the stuff does come up, you know, what do we do, and what's the difference between our responsibility for athletics at the high school versus the middle school, and what are we doing for the elementary school vis-à-vis, you know, the youth, the town youth associations that might be participating in the same sports? Do we give them priority for field use or not, yada, yada, yada? So it's always something that's coming up, but it doesn't have to be the intensive work that we were doing for three hours every Saturday, every month, or three hours every month for two years. And so it'll probably be every other month or every, once a quarter for us to sit down.
But we still need to keep a policy group because you never know when something's going to be triggered and that the group has to be...
Compliance.
And I think that if we have less committees, then there can be more time in the agenda to have more of a conversation about that. I brought this up a couple of times, I would really like us to really change the way that we do finance. I think that we are just, you know, two hundred and sixty, okay, five, go, pass it on. I think that what needs to happen is that we have, you know, warrants before us and then let's talk about that. You know, and it's not necessarily just warrants, maybe we have a finance subtopic. And then anything relating to finance goes under there so that warrants are covered, but there's more information in terms of, you know, this is for, these are straightforward, this is all payroll, you know, this is for whatever, and so we have a chance to actually look at that in case we have questions about it. I mean, some of us in the finance team get a chance to look at that, but I think that there should be more open dialogue about what we're doing in terms of the, you know, finances. So maybe finance team could talk about that, fin comment there next meeting, in terms of how we might be able to restructure finance. I've never quite understood why we had a curriculum subcommittee, and I initially pushed back, but I got pushed back from the school committees, and all I said, okay, I'll assign people to curriculum. But I always felt that that was more flow of information to us that we could respond to as opposed to us really doing anything. Unless, for example, something comes up around homework, for example, and then I think it would make more sense to set ad hoc committees and that we not do something in isolation, but we say, okay, the school committee would like an ad hoc committee on looking at homework or whatever, some issue on special needs or safety. And then we bring in teachers and administrators and we do, you know, three quick meetings or something and then report back out. I think that would make, or Angela's talking about, you know, the work that's being done in looking at a new science curriculum. And so, you know, we put a group together, or it's for the whole committee. But we do it beforehand at an earlier meeting on the fourth meeting of the month or something, and we focus more on, you know, what's happening in committee structure at that point. I agree. Superintendent's evaluation is what it is, and I think we just have to go with join as as a means of communication. I think we've made a lot of progress just in our conversations about communication and the fact that we're going to redo the website for the school committee. I think that's the place, instead of going, you know, back in time to newsletters, I think that's the kind of thing that, I mean, I don't know how many people actually read newsletters from beginning to end anyway, but I think that if you're putting up ongoing information on the school website and that people can sign up for the website, then they're getting pinged and they know that information is there, that something new has been posted, you know, as opposed to some, you know, because we know that assigning somebody to do a newsletter is not going to work. It's just not going to, we know. In this day and technology, I think it's better to sort of focus on a different approach to communication. And that's one facet of us putting information out. But now we have to figure out how we, you know, have the parent involved, and like we did tonight, I'd love to see that, you know, times 10, more students coming to present to us.
I think the website is a great opportunity, and I think we started heading in the right direction four years ago when we redid our website the last time. But it became more of a repository of documentation and not a means of communication. I think if we can keep that in mind, probably needs to be, yeah, the documentation needs to be there as backup, but there needs to be more blogging perhaps, or that kind of, you know, spreadable communication discussion.
Somebody stamps a picture of a student doing a presentation at a school committee, that gets loaded up, refer people to, you know, the high school principal, just for the presentation and his entry plan, you know, we get that electronically, that's linked to our school committee site. And, you know, somehow make it so that it doesn't, I mean, you can't find anything on the school committee.
Because again...
You didn't even have the right calendar, you know, when constructing. So, I mean, we really do, and I appreciate the fact that Brian is stepping up because this is, there is expertise, and we've worked out with a local host to be able, Sean has approved the funding for that, so that we can begin to move forward on having our own website, which I think makes a lot of sense.
You have to, the information, so to be careful, it's information overload, right?
Yes.
I get hundreds of things a day and stuff I actually want to look at, you just don't have the time. So if we're going to do, if it's, you know, for lack of a better term, blog posting, you know, how often do you do it? Like, once a month, probably not enough, but every week might be too much, you know, because then eventually you get people, and fun, they sign up and they get the ping, and eventually it just...
Probably Tuesday after a school committee meeting.
Right.
You know, and that's where we put...
It also needs to be tied into, I think, within the, within the audiences that we have in the school committee. As I was pointing out before, we have different types of stakeholders.
Yep.
A Brezner hand parent isn't going to want to read the same thing necessarily that a high school parent is interested in.
Yep.
A skew isn't going to want to necessarily read the same kind of a thing that someone in the senior center wants to check in on when they go to the senior center and silently look at the web.
But it's also pretty clear that, I think, from conversations tonight, that the community is looking for where we are on Start School Later. They want, you know, an update on where we are, and I think that's an appropriate piece for a group of us to sit down and put together something to put up on the website about where we are.
My feeling about this, and this is a very, very useful conversation, I don't, I couldn't tell you what our footprint is in the community over the internet. I couldn't tell you what it is. District website, Facebook page, some of us individually blog, do the schools have blogs? I couldn't tell you. We don't have, we don't have that picture, I don't even have the picture of what we're doing, you know? You know, I'll get, suddenly somebody will send me an email and say, did you see on this Facebook page what somebody said? And it's like, I didn't even know people were talking about on that Facebook. I mean, sometimes I don't even know. So even just purely informational, it would be very helpful for me to be part of a process that simply catalogs where we currently are right now. Where are we right now? Communications, you know, to me, when I first started, before I was elected to the school committee, I served on a committee with a number of people who were on the school committee about communications. And the net result of that was a biannual newsletter, and Nick was on that.
Committee.
Biannual newsletter, which was outcome, which was, we're going to give you information. There was no mechanism for gathering information through that. And there is a third function that I think we do very, very imprecisely and in a very scattered way, and that really is, how do we use, how do we communicate with the community in a way that engages them, engages them, invites them into the schools, makes, identifies resources out in the community that we may not be available of, that be aware of, that can come into the schools and work with us? So, you know, there's a part of me that just simply wants to say, okay, let's have a meeting and let's get on the blackboard and break down where we are. What do we have? What do we have? What are we doing? How is information getting out there? And then seeing what of that can be improved, what of that can be combined, what of that, what are we missing from that? And I, so I sort of feel like I need a little bit of structure to at least take a snapshot of where we are. And then from there, have the conversation about how we do all this really exciting, interesting stuff.
Talking about working toward a communications plan.
Yeah, that might be, that might be one of the topics that should be tackled by an ad hoc committee.
I know exactly what Dave was going to say, and I agree wholeheartedly. Go ahead.
If we had a goal, what do we want to communicate? Why do we want to communicate? To who we want to communicate? Do we figure out the schools, the students? We figure out, you know, you've got a new Twitter page, the school committee, because there's not a whole lot that people were going to say in that limited three-pronged verbiage that people are really going to be interested about. Start times happens to fall under policy at some level. So, Bruce, you and I also talked last year a couple of times, I think it was around the calendar decision, that when we come up with major decisions, we should release some sort of white paper, the way like a Supreme Court brief would be, this is what we've decided, this is why we've decided it, these are the dissenting views that are there and heard but got outvoted, that kind of thing. So people understand, when we released the calendar last year, both because of the shift in half-days and the shift earlier into August, I mean, people were like, why are we doing this? Why are we doing this? Why are we doing this? And we had no coordinated, the here's the one thing is why we did it.
But I think if we had better communication, we would have had a much broader turnout and feedback from people before we took the vote. I don't think we had a tremendous amount of, I mean, there was in between the two meetings, you know, a dozen emails or so, that's not representative of the school committee, I mean, of the school community.
So, you know, one part of the communication goal could be, and like Andy brought up tonight, how do we get to those voices that aren't going to organically and easily speak up? You know, I know for a while you guys tried, what was that thing on the website you had with a "talk to me" or whatever it was called for that? Just, what's it called?
Let's Talk.
Let's Talk.
That was a disaster.
It was a disaster, but at least the, you know, the goal is there that says, hey, if you have something to say to us, you know, send this off, and it's easy for you to do, and it'll get to my person. It didn't work well, but that idea that, you know, how are we going to get to those people who aren't going to naturally and easily speak up could be one of our goals.
If we had goals. Let's not jump the conversation here.
One of our priorities if we had goals, yes.
Yeah, I just, well, first of all, the last couple of months, you know, Andy's, Andy Wolf had it since March, the head start on me here. But I think going back, a lot of the conversations that we've had are really articulated in the strategic plan. And, you know, all the way from, you know, late start, flexible scheduling, communication, bringing stakeholders to the table. So all, a lot of this discussion is outlined in the strategic plan, and that was part of our mission this summer, working with the district leaders and also extended leadership team, is to really bring this back. team, is to really bring this back to the table and kind of self-reflect on where we're at, where we need to go. So, I think that that's going to assist with communication. I think communication, I, you know, I have a different leadership style. I've had success, I think, with meeting with people and talking to people, listening to different points of view, being accessible. You know, I plan on, as we started the school year, to set up my own focus groups with parents and community members, business community, road lecturians, and to kind of gather the feedback and how we can all work together. So, I agree. I think that how we're communicating is very, very important and, you know, just, we're taking steps in the right direction. Our extended leadership team meeting this Thursday, we have James Coffey, who is recognized at the national level for, as a school administrator on, you know, social media and how to utilize that as a powerful tool to communicate messages out to parents and families.
What's his name?
James Coffey.
Who?
It's C-O-F-F-E-Y. And he's presented at the Masque. He also worked, he worked for me in the past. He's up in Maine right now, but he's going to do a nice workshop for us. So, I think we're moving in the right direction, you know, and I've been taking a lot of feedback from the community and doing my own entry plan. And I think there are areas, you know, that we can improve and, you know, communication is going to be part of it. And I'm hoping within a few months that people will be very happy with the accessibility of myself and of the community. So, that's kind of where I feel is, I think we're all, we're all on the same page, from the school committee to the parents, the students, the administration. And it's just really put together a plan and getting there. So, I'm excited for the opportunity.
What is, do you have any thoughts about how the school committee can help you facilitate this process, to make this process, putting a communication plan together for the district? Is their role for the school committee, how can we help you do that?
I think that as we're all moving forward together, I think that, you know, this is part of the learning process, really enhancing what has worked well and looking at some of the areas that we can improve. And I know the upgrades to the website, making that more accessible, talking to some of my colleagues, the superintendent's blog, that people can kind of see what's going on in the district is part of that website. And then also reaching out and utilizing Twitter to get messages out and celebrate students and teachers. I think that all ties into that. So, I think that for us as a board, it's, you know, as we're moving forward, is kind of getting input on, you know, what areas we can improve on, what's worked in the past, what hasn't worked in the past, and then also the expectation that you have of the superintendent's central office and district administration, you know, working with parents, students, and families, so.
One of the things that I heard that I think would be really positive on the school committee website would be to feature things that had happened at the meeting. And then also on the other side, to be able to promote what might be coming. So, if you know that there's a presentation coming by the high school principal, to really be able to promote that, because one of the things I've heard, being a part of these conversations for several years now, is that you want community input, you want participation at the meetings, and you'd like to have a broader audience come. And I think if that could be part of the communication plan from the school committee, really talking about all of the things I've heard, like David talking about a white paper when a decision is made that talks about the rationale behind the decision, and acknowledging the fact that sometimes decisions are made that are controversial. But these were the reasons, that whole idea of why, I think, you know, that was a real strength in Andy Wolf's presentation to the students was, "Yeah, I know some of these things are going to be controversial, but here's why, we're at least starting where we are." I think that would be really helpful, you're sort of promoting the work that happens here and making it less dry and a little more interesting and exciting for people to come and listen and engage.
Do we bring it back to committees a little bit, or, I don't know, we kind of morphed into communications, so it's all the same? We can bring it back to committees. I mean, is there, is there a use either for standing or an ad hoc committee to pull any of this together, is one question, I think. Is there, are there ways that we can participate in conversations that the superintendent is already beginning to set up within the district around communication?
I think, given what you said earlier, Bruce, about a footprint, I think maybe in collaboration with the superintendent as to what his goals may be, I think we need to assess what that footprint may be and what we want it to look like, if you will. So, some type of assessment and maybe considering what type of tools we're going to include in that.
I think, I mean, to me, that's a start, you know? I mean, there's a lot of really wonderful philosophical conversations we could have about the goal of communication, what is communicating. But while we're talking about that, we're already communicating in lots of different ways, and I just, I don't know what they are, you know? I couldn't, I wouldn't know if I had something that I felt needed to be communicated to the larger district, what vehicles exist currently.
Well, that's the, we get the district emails a little bit. I wonder who sends those out? Who sends out the district emails to Blackboard?
Catholic media.
Catholic.
Well, the schools sometimes send, they're, if it's just school-based, but if it's district, the entire district.
I think that's something we should talk about, too, because we have a wide variety of emails, and some of them have to do with schools and some of them have to do with NEF. And I love NEF, but I think, like, the NEF events, we get 30 a day sometimes in the schools, so then they get lost. I think they all come from the NOK address.
Yeah, it's like the same sending.
But when I get an address, it says the NOK Middle School, and then it's a district email, so.
I wonder if it's a school that your children are in?
It comes from district office.
Oh.
But, you know, as an example, so one is for youth services, drive-in, at one mile, which is great.
Kind of.
But I don't know where it belongs, from the school district. Like, the NOK Middle School sent out about the basketball, the school clinic thing, but that came from the NOK, but the other ones come, but they're all from Blackboard regardless, it's just the sender.
But I think some, maybe that falls to policy, like, how that's going to get used? Because I know in the past, there has been, there have been some groups who felt they weren't included in the ability to use the district-wide communication list. And I'm sure there's some policies about what can and cannot be used for it. But it's just another part of the conversation. You know, Bruce, as far as figuring out our footprint, footprint is, like, I mean, we could send everybody a Google form, I don't know who you want to know from, but that's pretty easy.
I would just like to...
That's a 30-second, you know, exercise.
So, would it be helpful if we shared, if we collected how we're communicating with parents through, you know, the Connect Ed, the webpage, who's, who has a Twitter account, like, throughout the district, so you know how the different ways we're communicating to start with that?
That would be, that would be great, and maybe if, David, Brian, what ways that aren't associated with the schools is information about the schools getting out there? You know, we have the Facebook, we have this Facebook page called Optimizing Education, there's also another one...
Maybe that's just parents.
But, but it is a way that information gets out there and discussed, so I'm just trying to...
It's information.
Exactly.
More often than not.
Exactly. But nobody, somebody clicking on that page because it's talking about schools probably is not going to be able to immediately know whether or not it's coming from the district or is it hosted by the district or what's going on. So, so where we have those kinds of things going on out there, I just really want to know what they are.
You know, we set up a, you know, we talked about last week during that thing where if you want to get in touch with us, here's a chain of command, do it. We could also say if you'd like to hear from us, how are the places you could go?
Exactly.
Here's over the high school, here's the, here's Brez, here's the school committee, like, here's...
You can sign up for notifications.
You know, you know, some places, or if you want to go to Twitter, or if you wanted to hear what parents are talking about, here's six different Facebook groups.
Just knowing.
If we wanted to validate everything and anything, or pick and choose depending on how we find, but that's another, like, that could be one stop shopping a communications page to and from.
Yeah, I think that that would be just, that would be, that would be very helpful, I think. So, the district is going to pull together what they're doing at all levels, you know, even right down to, I think, if teachers have websites.
Sure.
You know, it would just be very helpful to know that. Thanks for, how can we gather, if we, the three of us have a conversation, do you think we can identify most of the things that are out there?
Sure. No problem. Most of them are very directed, are known, there are a couple of specialty Twitter accounts as well.
Let's, can we just sort of...
We got the high school, there's athletics, there's one for drama, primarily at the high school level, and I'm aware, but there might be at other levels as well.
That's going to be information that's going to be helpful to you, Sean, as you put together a communications plan. So, I will, I'll facilitate that conversation. It'll just be, since it's just strictly an information gathering conversation, you know, we can do it outside of the community. And then we'll provide that information to Sean, and then we'll take the next step of figuring out what, what we're doing in terms of communication plan. That would be, personally, that would be very helpful to me to know sort of how we're talking to people.
What's the baseline?
What's the baseline? What's, what's missing, you know? And that's, that's the exciting part of the conversation. I just feel like I need some basic information, so I know what the geography is right now.
I guess I'd only say about the committees, you know, with regards to back to curriculum, maybe if, and I know there's a process, I could just email and ask, but I guess we could just enhance your update. So, for example, to know what's going on with foreign language and the curriculum expectations or what's going on with the conversation on homework and those sorts of things. You could just report that's...
Well, what we could do, probably do is just, as Bruce is the vice chair, is, are there curriculum points that we would all like to have updates on? And let's send that list, so let's not, you know, have Angela come back with a 50-point update, but we could...
Send it to me.
Yeah, and I think, because I think we all have questions about certain things that are happening in the curriculum, and that way we can start helping you build your feedback to us in terms of that piece, and then curriculum is over there. And we could always do an ad hoc committee if something comes up that we need to address at this point. But I think that the one thing that we, we really do need, I know there is an ad hoc committee on Start School Later, but I think we really need to keep that momentum. And I'd like something in our agenda for our next meeting with an update to the community on where we are in terms of process, and whether that means we need to meet again to really, I mean, I thought our conversation last week was fabulous. I think it really, I think, helped, you know, have, a lot of information was shared about, you know, where we are, what the obstacles are. But I think, you know, I don't want to put something out there yet until we're ready, but I think that that we need to update the committee, and I don't know if we need to do another meeting on that, just outside of a whole committee meeting. I don't know, but I suspect we do.
As a group.
Before we're, you know, and then, I, because I think we started on talking about action pieces, and I said I would take on transportation, that there's a lot of other components, we need an update from athletics, you know, and it involves the starting of teacher negotiations in terms of change of work conditions.
Bruce, the summary today I thought was, you know, right on and saying, "Hey, none of us are questioning the science here. None of us are questioning whether or not it's a good idea. What we're questioning is what is the best way to make it happen." And, you know, that is the gist of what we communicate as a group and talk about some of the steps that we're taking, could analyze how we can make it happen.
Yeah, but Bruce also did say that he's speaking only for himself, and that's, and I know, because he was...
Supporting it, I guess.
I know, but, but I think that the community wants to know, because even when one of the parents stood up and said, "I don't know where you all stand on this," it's important to have the unified support. So, I think we need to make some kind of statement that, you know, we all support the science and our, our task is to try and work through the challenges to get us to the other side so that we can make those changes.
It is also important to note, I think, all of those parents expect us to be working on this for next fall.
Yes, absolutely. And so, we can't let other months go by where we all are busy doing other things, and we have to start figuring out who's going to do what pieces of this, because there's a lot. And I, I would recommend that we do another meeting on this.
I would ask superintendent. A point that was made, that we made at our meeting, was that one of the, one of the challenges was that it was not driven at the administrative level. So, that is, it was an issue that was raised tonight, you know, that one of the parents come in, came in and said, you know, that the superintendent didn't support it and that the principal of the high school was not actively in favor of it, and that, that...
In their mind, killed it.
In their mind, that, that made it not work. I don't want to get out ahead of Sean on this, I want to work in partnership with Sean on this. So, before we commit to another meeting, I'd like to sort of hear from Sean, let him think about this and how, how, how we can best facilitate this. Clearly, I mean, I, I think, there are a number of areas, I think, that, and this actually goes back to sort of some of the conversations in curriculum. One of the conversations that I think that bears an interesting relationship to flexible start times is the conversation about the NOK being 990 or 900 hours. That if, if the NOK expands to 990 hours, we're going to have to make changes in buses anyway. So, I want to encourage conversations and like to hear about how conversations are going with regard to that, if it's even a topic of conversation. I think that it was, but we haven't been updated on any of those conversations. So, we can move forward in a number of different ways to set the stage.
Can I ask, Sean, would you be comfortable having a meeting like we had with your administrative team? Because I know, I mean, Susan and Mike got called out tonight, but in the end, I don't recall any in-district champions. So, I don't think it was just Susan and Mike who were soft, if not uninterested in it.
Well, I'd like to start with Andrew. I think that would make sense for that first meeting, you know, with the...
I'm just saying, like, for everybody, because I know there were, you know, there were struggles at the Brezner hand, and that community had a hard time with the flip, especially with any, any other start time to start, so I think at some level...
Yeah, and I, I mean, I agree. I mean, it's in your, it's in the strategic plan. I mean, what I'd like to do is actually be on, on the ground level and really understanding, because I know you, you worked on this for a couple of years, or you, you were studying this for a couple of years, and really at the grassroots and kind of get a feel of, I think, at every level with parents, community members, kind of, you know, where they're at, you know? Are they, are they still in a lot of support? Or, I think no one can dispute the science, right? This is like a, as we all know in education, throughout the nation, this is a hot topic in really studying this. But when you're working within communities, every community has a certain element of, as you, you know, you mentioned in our last meeting, a roadblock or an obstacle or a challenge. And I would really like to understand through the community, the parents, you know, the students, teachers, of kind of what are some of those challenges and why, after two years, some of the lessons that Bruce said, lessons that we learned that went well, and some of the lessons that didn't go so well, and kind of work with people and have a conversation and understand what those obstacles were. I think that's really, really important. I think any type of change that you're going to make, especially when you're looking at times of a schedule, some of the most challenging aspects within a school community. And I always feel if it's, if it's not done right, in the sense where... And I always feel if it's, if it's not done right, in the sense where you bring people to the table, and you have these conversations, and you fully understand the challenges, it can have ramifications on, you know, on a district, where you lose trust of people, where people aren't on board. So, I think, for me, it's really important, you know, we're talking about communication, and my ultimate goal is people won't be running to social media and voicing concerns and negativity. It would be really working with me, the administration, to change that culture of trust, of, hey, you know, this superintendent is going to do his best for kids, is going to, you know, put, put everything on the table, and really look at what the pros are, the cons, and really look, if there are obstacles, how we're going to overcome those. So, I think for me, it's, it's really important for me to get out in the community, to talk with a lot of the stakeholders with their children that are, that's going to have an impact, and really just get a full understanding of some of those obstacles, you know, from one community that, you know, instituted it to the next, there's different challenges. I'll just give you an example, we had this conversation in Wilmington. Now Wilmington offered free transportation for the entire community, so any student that wanted transportation on the buses, there was not a problem. So, when we started to talk about late start and changing times, that would have changed for that community. That was one where if they're going to start changing, then now you're not going to have a free transportation, you're going to have to pay for that. And that was really important for the community as that dialogue, that was going to be an obstacle. Here, I'm not sure what some of those roadblocks were, but alls I know is, you know, when I was a principal in Beverly, and as I'm looking at the research in the 24 schools on the North Shore, we, we had the latest start, and we started at 8:15, ended at 2:33, and that's, I think, right now, we're still the latest high school start. So, and we made some modifications to our start time district-wide, but there was a lot of communication to the community, there was a lot of buying, there was a lot of people who were in favor, that would say, "This is wonderful", and then there's some parents and community members who are not going to be in favor, but they need to have a voice, and they need to voice their concerns, and we need to answer a lot of those things. So, I think for me, it's really important for me to establish these relationships within this community, and have these, these conversations. So, that's, that's kind of my, I, I think you're really, you know, trying to, to make it work, I think the science is there, I think, I think the community, you guys did a great job with the science and the research of why this is important for kids. I think in the neck, the next step for me is to kind of find out what those roadblocks were, and, you know, and, and work with people to overcome those, so. And it's, and it's, as I said, it's, go right back to your strategic plan, it's all part of the five-year strategic plan, so it's in there, so. I don't know if that answered your questions, if kind of my thought processes are on that?
I think the, I mean, I, no, but I think, you know, again, I can't speak on behalf of the school committee, I can just sort of speak to my experience of this. And I think what would be really important is, and this is, the only way this happens is over time and experience, is to feel very confident that you're getting out there and having those conversations, that, that if, if that is happening and, and that is communicated to us, then I think that, that that's a very important thing for us to support while we're starting to put other structures in place that we can, so that some of those roadblocks, you know, whether they're contractual or financial, we have some answers for, you know, that, that we're working on, on a couple of different tracks here. So, I, so I think that that's, and personally, that it's important for me to know that that's going on. My experience of you is that if you say it's going on, it will be going on, but let's see where we are three months from now, let's see where we are two months from now, let's see where we are a month from now.
If we do have that meeting, though, I think it'd be really important for Kyle to be there.
Yes.
One of the biggest obstacles was sports, and even at the end of the day, he came out and said, "No, half an hour's no big deal", that was the, they kept coming up, "My sports, sports, sports are going to really be hard to get the kids for away games", and I don't recall him being at any of the games during the process.
Yeah, and I think, again, you know, one of the lessons that we learned was that there really wasn't a conversation in-depth had at the Cape Ann League about it.
Right.
It really was not an in-depth conversation, so that, that is something that's going to happen.
Sean, would you feel comfortable with the next, I don't know how much time you would want, start putting together sort of a, a plan about who we talk to and when those can happen, just so people can know, again, back to the question, what, what is going on?
Right.
I think that's the next step, right?
Correct.
You want to start thinking about focus group, how to, how to put that together, when to have that, when to put that together?
If I can just add to that, Andrew, Sean, and I've talked about this a bit, and I don't mean to speak for you, but, you know, a really important part of his induction to the district is to build his entry plan, and I think the best way to have these conversations are really as part of the strategic plan conversations, so that this is a piece of it, as you said, it is, it's right in the strategic plan, and as Bruce brought up earlier, it didn't have internal support, he's, we have to give him a chance to build some trust and start to build that internal support for it, and that's going to break down many of the barriers, you know, right there. But I think that's going to take time, I think, to push him in to say, "Can you tell us when you're going to have that done"? He could probably start to outline how he's going to start to build his entry plan, and what those meetings are going to look like, and this could be a part of all of those conversations, but to single this out, I don't think it's going to be the best way for him to approach these conversations. You know, it just take, it makes him look like he's got a single focus, rather than everything that's there.
We talked about that, so, if, if that's reality, that's reality, I'm just going back to the fact that people are curious of what's going on, what's the timeline, what the big picture timeline looks like, so. I think there's, you know, probably one of the things that we could do, Sean is comfortable with, is just say that, you know, Sean is covering this, this topic amongst the many things he's looking at for his entry plan, and that he understands that the school committee would like to understand how we, how we go with this, and that, that in itself, it sets it up for a lot more openness than what the public perceived happened before. And then the rest of us can do all of those little projects that the mayor's talking about.
Okay, we'll move on. Do we have, we have an understanding here of how we're going to do this, what we're doing next? Yes and no?
Sean, not at all, actually. That's what I was asking, like, Sean, do you feel comfortable calling up with some sort of a plan brief, whatever that is? And, I mean, the only difference is this, this item has a timeline on it.
Yeah.
So, like, there, there is a little bit of a difference. So, and that's really everyone's number one question, is going to be, are we doing it, and is it next year, or is it the year out? And I think if we said, "Listen, realistically, we're not in a place to make it happen for next year",
Right.
Then, you know, like, Aric said, "Okay, just let me know, so I don't think it's going to happen",
Sure.
"and find out that it's not".
Well, and I think that, that, when you're, you're talking about, and only the focus groups understanding that, one of the big aspects is the, anytime you make a change, especially where, you know, contract negotiations with three unions, this is a good time to have some of, you know, these discussions, in general, not this specific, but, so that's, that's also, I know, is going to be a, a challenge, because even if, I think there is, when you're working with unions, and I've, I've done different schedule changes at the high school, that there has to be buy-in and preparation for that too, so. But that's part of, like, as Andrew said, my entry plan in, in taking all of this in is this, is this feasible for next year, or are we looking at it, you know, a year out, so we have everybody on the same page, you know? But that's, that's kind of what I need to know, I mean, as I'm meeting with people, you know?
Yeah, I think, it's, it's interesting to me that, when I heard people who were challenged by this, the feedback that I got, was, was, it was not about the science, it was about how it's going to impact this individual family, and whether, whether it was, you know, needing care in the morning, or, you know, the concern about their kids, that's, that's an important thing for me to keep remembering, that those are the concerns that he's going to hear about, that we're going to need to be able to respond to. I don't, I don't think it's the science, I think we did a great job, and you guys did a great job in getting the science out there, it's, it's clear. So, it's, it's having that conversation, bringing that out, and sort of validating that that's a concern people have, let's talk about solutions to it, in, in a, that I think is really important. But I also agree that we need to have a statement to the community of some sort, saying, "This is what it's going to look like over the next period of time, whatever that period is". I think that that would be important, it's what a number of people asked us for tonight, and I, I think that it's a fair thing for them to ask for, you know, other than sitting down and, and having conversations, and sort of mapping it out in a big way, you know, maybe, maybe that's something that Sean and I can talk about, and draft something that we can send around for discussion to everybody else, so that we, we do that. But I, I think we do need to make a response to the community that's not quite as vague as, as it seems to be. That it's clear, this is what we're talking about, this is what we anticipate over the next six months, over the next nine months. I'll have a conversation with Sean, and we'll, we'll produce something that people can give us feedback on.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Okay? Good. As a matter of fact, I'll make it a goal, which segues into our conversation about school committee goals and objectives. This conversation was actively driven by the feedback that Dave gave us from Mas, and it's something he's been asking for, for a length of time, that we really need to look at our school committee goals. Nick also has done some thinking about this. It was really clear to me that we began to work on what I think should be a goal, which is communication. We began to really flesh that out in the conversation we had 20 minutes ago. How, I, I would like to have a set of goals that align with where the superintendent and his district team are, which in turn means that we're going to come up with a set of goals that are embedded in the strategic plan. How do we do that? You know, I think it's something we should be doing soon. How do we do that? How do we have that conversation? How do we, how do we map out those goals? Thoughts?
I think one of the key questions that I have is, again, where do we separate our area of responsibility from what is the district's area of responsibility? When we take a look at the strategic plan, the fact that we have and support a strategic plan doesn't necessarily mean that, as a school committee, we need to get involved in each or in any of the strategies that came up. Little, we take a look at something is, take a look at the, the strategies that were set out of the strategic plan, the reimagining teaching and learning, offering an array of opportunities, self-discovery and personal achievement, those all live in the district and need to live in the district. Maximize internal and external resources, and maybe there's some things that we might be able to touch on there. Optimize our organizational design and operations, that's got to come from our CEO. If he wants to make changes and has some ideas about how to do it, we can prove it as it relates to our budget, or it relates to our policies. We've got to give him the, the ability to drive that, that piece of it. So, as we go through those strategic plans, while I think we all support the strategic plan, I sort of question where it is that we can have an impact as a school committee? And I think, one of the things that, I, the chart that I sent around was more of a, a thought starter, and as I was looking at that, I was, and, and thinking about what our role is in this whole process. I think, while we support the strategic plan, I need to be behind the strategic plan, I need to follow up on the strategic plan as part of our supervision of the superintendent, or understand how the strategic plan affects our budget as part of finance, or what policies need to be, what policies need to be changed in order to make the strategic plan happen. That is where we need to, to put some of our focus in, and I'm not sure it's directly feeding into any of these particular, particular strategies, but perhaps into all of them. And knowing, and quite frankly, I don't think I know where we are on enough of the aspects of the strategic plan to know, have any areas of policy change being identified? What is the financial impact of the different things we'd like to be working on? These are the things that we should be focusing on, and those are the things that I think should be translated into our role. And that, so it's, I'm not sure it's going to be as easy as saying, "Okay, on strategy number one, what's the school committee going to do"? It may be a policy change, it may be more money, it may be none of the above, and we don't have anything there. I think it's something that'll be responsive and deferential to the district is going to be really important. And so, when you guys come to us, and, you know, maybe, maybe some of it has to do with the agendas, like clearing the deck, so we understand and have time to understand what it is you guys are working on, and then your requests, say, "Hey, listen, guys, there's a policy here, there's a budget piece here". And I think we've had trouble in the past as well, and just going to complete this and then, I'll shut my traffic in. As we've been trying to align the five areas of responsibility, and set our self-evaluation based on those five areas, we've had trouble trying to imagine what does it really look like, and I think one of the reasons for that...
Difficult to evaluate.
Yeah, one of the reasons for that is, those are district goals, those are superintendent goals. Our role is something completely different. And so, perhaps we're trying to tie ourselves too much to what the superintendent and district have in their goals, and we need to say, when we think about our goals, we need to think about it differently, and to think about different things that we need to look at accomplishing. Are we setting the agenda that allows a superintendent to come back to us with his needs and appearance succinct way, so we, and the whole community can understand? Do we have the processes in place for adequate feedback from the community, so we can understand how they're feeling? These are some of the things that perhaps we need to be thinking about, instead of saying, you know, at the top of the, you know, "We're going to ensure the district has direction and resources to meet communities' stated expectations and standards", that sounds good, but I'm not really sure what it means. Unless we know what the district needs are, unless we have a process in place to hear from the community, we don't make that intersection happen.
I agree with everything that you've said, Nick, and, you know, I have found this, you know, I understand that there was enthusiasm with the strategic plan, and that we wanted to be united with what was happening, but I think we, we took the umbrella way too far in terms of, you know, what we were trying to impart of every single component in the strategic plan. So, I, I would just like to ask the committee at this point, so how do we proceed? Do we look at this rubric? Do we need an update on the strategic plan before we look at our goals, in terms of where we are? Do we sort of look at this and then, you know, just kind of spend some time with it between now and our next meeting, because I don't think we're ready to do much of anything with this tonight, I mean, I...
I'm not sure this rubric is functional.
But I, but you put things, this is what we've been evaluating ourselves on, so I think this is important, so I think that, you know, and it also... So I think that, you know, and it also is reflective of the strategic plan. So I don't, you know, this is the kind of thing that you do in a workshop or a retreat kind of work. This isn't something, you know, I'm just looking for, how do we get there then? Do we need an update on the strategic plan?
I think a strategic plan review makes a lot of sense, especially you'll give, you know, the superintendent some fresh information and, you know, he can gauge things as to where he'd like to take things.
Is that a fair ask of you, Angela, at this point in terms of helping us have an update on where we are with the strategic plan?
I think, you know, we've spent some time on that with our leadership team this summer. So we've got kind of things like, that has not been a full analysis though, you know, we haven't reached out to all of our...
Well, we don't need to get down into the weeds, but I think an overview would be really helpful from the leadership team.
I think we could give you, I definitely think we could do that. And if I could add something else, I mean, you spent a lot of time tonight talking about communication. I would think that would want to be one of your goals, to set some very clear, you know, actions around that communication goal. And then we can do an update on where we are with the strategic plan. You know, when the strategic plan was originally built, there was a whole section that identified what the budgetary connections to some of these goals were. Maybe Superintendent Gallagher and I should take a look at that and connect that to some of it.
Because that is directly relevant to our work.
That's directly relevant, and those, many of those areas have already been identified.
Okay.
And so I think there may be areas of the strategic plan that we might be able to bring back to you and help you connect to things that would be relevant.
And as you do that, if you could also take a look at, say, that think you would say, okay, which of these would require change in policy?
I could also suggest something else for people to think about over the next couple of weeks, and that is, we clearly have responsibility, budgetary responsibility is one of the big three that we've got. Can anybody here articulate what our budget process is and how do we engage the community in that process?
Did you?
What year?
What year?
Exactly.
We've tried different strategies.
We've tried different strategies, but it seems to me that a really good goal would be to develop a strategy that is an engaging strategy that serves the purpose of the district, the purpose of the community, and the purpose of the school committee. Having a budget process that we can count on, that's not going to be dramatically changing from year to year. That is, you know, we can't, we have, we're responsible for the budget. We don't, we can't articulate what the process is.
I think that has to do with the level of despondency each year. I'm serious. As much money as Don tries to get us, there's no point in having workshops every other Saturday if we're just going to be able to have level serviced budget. You know what I'm saying? Like, if, Don, if you crank out four and a half percent for us and that's going to barely cover things, we don't need to hear from the community what their aspirations are because...
I have to disagree.
Well, I'm just saying, well, we can disagree about the future, but I think that's what's happened in the past.
Right.
Is that every so often, one of the years, we feel excited about something and we get everybody together, we think there's going to be some money, we talk about how we might want to play with that, or we think there's going to be some dramatic budget cuts, we end up having, you know, a couple thousand people in an auditorium here to, you know, to gripe about what they don't want cut. But I think I've sent you guys a couple emails recently about just transparency issues, like what happens over the summer. Like, so I know we talked a lot about in the spring that we were waiting to find out when the state finalizes, so whatever happened with that? I don't think people understand that. I don't think the city council understands that. I don't think the community, I don't think I understand, like, what happened ultimately? How did that play out?
About $32,000.
Okay.
Probably $32,000 more than the previous year or total.
More than we thought in the spring.
More than we thought.
Okay. So, you know, when you say that, okay, $32,000, I don't need weekends where the workshops to talk about that.
But, see, the problem is, is that I think we're always anticipating based on, you know, the excitement of three years ago when the legislature put together the Ed Reform Committee. We went and testified, they traveled all around, and that it was right up until the end of July where we all had anticipated there was going to be movement in the legislature, and they all let it fail. And because the House and the Senate couldn't come to decision. And so we were left with, you know, so now, you know, here we are, the fair share went down, I don't know what's going to happen with that. And so now we're looking at marijuana in gaming as new revenue streams to fund our schools. What is wrong with this picture? I'll take...
Sure has changed from when I was in the past.
So, but I think, I think we've tried different approaches, but, you know, over the years, we've done site-based budget review and tours of schools with families. We've done, we've done a whole variety of ways, and, you know, each superintendent has their own style, and I think our past superintendent, it was her budget, and that, you know, she gave us updates periodically during her update, and then ultimately we received a budget, you know, and, you know, and the leadership team gave us their priorities. So I'd like to think that we could have a little more dialogue about it, but I agree there's not, we don't have a lot of leeway until Chapter 70 formula changes and the funding of charter schools changes. I mean, we know, we, you know, I mean, I scrape as much money as I possibly can, but also this year, I'll keep in mind that this will be a new contract for the teachers. So, you know, there's going to be money that is going to have to be allocated to cover salaries.
Three contracts.
Three contracts, as a matter of fact.
Absolutely.
So, you know, we have to look at that realistically and know that new programming?
Not likely.
Not likely.
Unless it's budget neutral, I mean, you know, we do use...
I mean, there has been additional revenue that has come into the state, no question about that. I certainly had a conversation with the lieutenant governor when she was here on Saturday about the, about the city's needs, and of course, school funding was right up there in conversation. And, you know, we just have to remind everyone who voted in favor of gaming that that was supposed to be a revenue stream for the schools and make sure that there's additional money put into this budget, which of course is my job. So, but, so I like this, I like the conversation though that we're having, that we, you know, sort of get an update on the strategic plan, you know, not too far in the weeds at our next meeting, and then from there, we sort of look at how that dovetails with our big three and begin to work on goals. And I think we'll get there. And then at the same time, you know, a superintendent can continue work on the entry plan, and then once that's done, then we can work on, you know, goals for the, from when your entry plan comes to the end of the academic year. So I think it's best we can do at this point.
I do like the idea that Dave mentioned, Dave and I have been on the same page all night, which is why I've been so quiet. But, you know, and I think I brought this up to Nick last, last meeting, just, you know, what we do here, you know, and we throw out strategic plan a lot, but I don't think we get into it a little bit. I think, you know, much like in school, you've got it tied to a standard, I think a lot of what we do publicly should be tied to a specific thing, the strategic plan, and we're talking about it a little bit more in depth instead of just saying, oh, sit in there.
Well, I'll look at it. We'll give it to you, but...
I have here.
Yeah. But I just, I just think that would, you know, whether it's, whether it's a homework conversation, again, I'd like the idea of maybe CIE going away and then, you know, just, you know, Angela having a little bit more focus to some of her reports around, you know, certain topics. Again, not a laundry list of topics, but just maybe bigger conversations that are going on and how that relates back to the strategic plan or relates to this part of it because we're trying to rethink, you know, our study halls, which might take away some of the homework burden on high school kids, something like that. I just think there's opportunities there for those things. And I love kind of more of this open dialogue and working meeting, I think, if that, if we can do that more on a regular basis, then I think that's a much more productive use of our time than, you know, than a CIE or something like that. So I hope we continue to do those. And I don't think it has to be directly around one, you know, one topic, like later start times, I think that can just be one of, maybe a few topics that we need to continuously, you know, talk about.
Just the latest start time, I know we formed an ad hoc committee, but I don't think we ever met or done anything. So if that's an opportunity for us to do some things, I mean, I know we formed that last year or last school year. I mean, I was, I'm more than willing to look at some things. So I mean, I think, you know, if we can do some things, again, because there is going to be a date that, you know, pulling no return as far as whether we can do that for next year. So that's just reality.
Well, the start of that is Sean and I having conversations and then trying to put together some ideas about how we move forward on it, what it's going to look like. And then we can pull together the ad hoc and then we've got maybe one of the, one of the elements of the plan. Let's wait till we get, let's pick up this conversation about goals after we get some feedback on the strategic plan, where we are. Again, being mindful that, you know, we have three areas in which we should be covering and that our goals should reflect that. Terrific. I think we've had our conversation back to the conclusions already. I turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Angela.
Okay. I will be brief. I wanted to give you a technology installation update because, as you know, we talked about this the last time, we have a lot of technology being installed in our district. So, but before I do it, I just once again want to recognize the hard work of our technology team, that they have been extraordinarily busy and just working around the clock to make this happen. And we're almost there. So the high school projector installation is about 90% complete. There are just a few science labs that aren't able to project yet. They ran into major wiring problems because of some of the infrastructure configuration. And they've had, but all the cables are now pulled, all the projectors are in. This evening, as a matter of fact, when I talked to Don, they were actually testing every port in every classroom in this building and hoping to have that done by morning. So it's the goal that this week, everything will be running. There's only like three labs that are not up with projectors. But all the Chromebooks and all the desktops are deployed in all the schools because remember all of the technology in all the schools and the teacher stations got replaced this summer. The sixth grade students have, they got their new Chromebooks today. The seventh grade students received their Chromebooks from last year, last week, and all of our eighth grade students all have Chrome cards in their classrooms. So in this progression of going one-to-one at the middle school, all of the additional Chromebooks that were bought in cart format have now all been moved to eighth grade. So essentially, it's one-to-one at our middle school. So that's really exciting.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Do they, and it can come in according to budget?
As far as I know, I have not, I can't answer that definitively, Don, but I haven't heard any grumblings that it, that it has been any different.
Okay. Who can give that information?
I can find that. Yeah.
Because I'd like to give that report. I didn't have, I had the elevator data for the school committee from my update to them for the city council last time, but I'd like to, I told them I would give them more details on the tech update. I said that, you know, they were a little delayed in terms of getting things in, but I know prices came in under in terms of the bids and, you know, they were working diligently to install.
Right.
But I'd like to give the financial piece to that if you'd be so kind.
I will. I'll ask Nancy about that. I did ask Don when he had said that they had run into some of these obstacles and how hard the installation was going for the company that was helping us with it. I said, are they charging us by the hour to do? And he said, no, it was by the job, thank goodness, because, you know, we ran into. So that's all good.
Quick process clarification. You said the sixth and seventh grade have one-to-one Chromebooks, and the eighth grade has a Chromebook cart in each class.
Right. They haven't been given their own, like, in sixth grade, as we wrote, as you remember, we started the one-to-one process in grade six last year.
Sixth graders will carry it.
They're going to carry that with them. They've got their own Chromebooks. So do the seventh graders because they have theirs from last year.
The eighth grade has enough to do that, but they're going to leave them in the classrooms?
Well, I just think right now, that's how they've been distributed. They haven't been, each one hasn't been tagged to an individual student or anything like that yet. It was just to move the technology that did exist, to collect it all, to get it into the classroom spaces so it's available for every classroom, and they'll work from there, Dave. I'm not sure exactly what the next steps are, but they were hoping that there would be enough Chromebooks from the rest of the building when collected to be able to really essentially go one-to-one. They haven't distributed them on an individual basis yet.
They only need 191.
Yes.
Pull up your...
Your next page.
With enrollment.
This year, the NEF funded new computers for the robotics lab, and those have also all been installed in the middle school. And once things settle down a little bit, our tech department will start to swap out the administrator Surface Pros for the new locktaps that will be going to administrators to replace the Surface Pros that were bought with the building project. So that's the technology update. Things are going pretty well. And then I also just wanted to give you a short update on the department district review. We've mentioned that the, that the school district has been selected to do a district review. And after communicating with the department, we did get a small extension to the timeframe in which we can upload all of our evidence in our self-evaluation. So we got about a three-week extension on that, which every bit will help. But we'll be conducting a self-assessment in all six of the standards. And I think I mentioned the standards to you before. There are six standards. There are leadership and governance, curriculum and instruction, assessment, human resources and professional development, student support, and financial and asset management. So those are the six standards in which the district will be doing a self-evaluation around those six standards and uploading evidence that the department will use to determine our targeted visit in January. We were originally scheduled to have a full review of all six standards, and luckily, they're going to do a targeted review of three of the standards. And they'll choose the three standards based on the information we submit in our self-assessment. So we'll learn what those three standards will be in their visit after the self-assessment has been submitted.
Who does all this work? You?
We all, we're, it's going to take us all. It's going to take the whole leadership team. Yeah. So we're, we will be rolling out the self-assessment to our leadership team this week on Thursday, and we've started the preliminary work of identifying...
I mean, aren't we supposed to be starting school and working with kids?
Yes.
This stuff should happen in the summer.
Wouldn't it be lovely? It would be lovely.
They would think that a new superintendent walked in the door, not a great year.
Well, that was, that was exactly the phone call that we made and tried, you know, desperately to explain that we not only have a new superintendent, a new high school principal, we have two new assistant principals. That's four new administrators that don't know the district at all yet to try to do some kind of self-assessment.
But they're still making you just upload all this information and then pick three.
They give us three weeks. I mean, they give us the additional three weeks. But anyway, you know, it will all be helpful in helping the superintendent develop his entry plan. This will all be good information for him, so if you look at the upside of that. But it's going to be a phenomenal task. I'm out of work. Right.
That's really what we should do to defer and support.
Yeah, we're going to have any meetings and pretty good self-assessments.
You could work the angles by just uploading information on three of those areas, and they'll pick the other three.
Right.
And then come in and you'll have it all.
Okay. That's true. But we, Superintendent Gallagher and I will present more detailed information about this at a future meeting so that you better understand what that self-assessment is all about and what's entailed. But we definitely would appreciate your support during this time because it's going to be a short window that we have to pull a lot of information together.
You can leave with the student route.
Please express our gratitude and condolences to the administrative teams.
Yes. Yes.
All right. Thank you, Angela.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's, it's one of the most intensive reviews.
NEAS was pretty intense, though.
Yeah, I've been through a NEAS a couple times, but this one will be pretty intense. That's why we, you know, as we start looking at the entry plan, we're looking at negotiating three contracts, we're looking at this district review, it's like I'm afraid to worry my email next week, see what's next.
Who comes to do the review, is it Desi, or do they, does it like NEAS where they bring...
It's Desi, Desi forms teams to do the review.
NEAS brings professionals.
Correct.
I know, I'm just saying.
All right, well, back to...
It's not random, they check out the restaurants, and then they decide which town it's in.
That's right.
And do they have enough data that Desi at this point to know how our school district is doing?
Well, you know, when the, when the woman we were talking to said, well, the good news is we've decided that new report will have a targeted review, I said, you know, I feel like we are a little targeted, yes, we've had a lot of reviews recently, you know, so, but...
Okay. Anything we can do to help, let us know.
Thank you.
So the superintendent's report, just touching base on our enrollment numbers, as of 8:30, it's 2244, 2,244 students, which is a drop of about 35 students since August 6th, but as we know, those numbers continue to flow in and flow out, especially, you know, for the October 1st data, that's why they have that October 1st data when school starts. Our strategic plan, just to update that, that's really been the driving force for all of us, and for me, as I'm entering into the district, to kind of look at some of the priorities that were outlined by this entire community. One of the, the big pieces for us, or for me as a superintendent, is to bring these stakeholders back to the table, because we're kind of like in the mid, we're in the middle of this strategic plan, and to see what we can do to, to bring the community back and really help us achieve a lot of the goals that are in here, so that's going to be an important process for me with our focus groups and a lot of the information I was talking about earlier. So for the opening of school, the week of school, I just wanted to thank all of the parents, the students, the teachers, I mean, the faculty, administrators, everybody involved, school committee, I think we had a great opening week of school, and there was a lot of work that was done before then, we had meetings in August 21st, pre-K, parent and guardian meeting, and Principal Davis, Principal Sullivan did a wonderful job there, was at that. Welcoming the new families was Principal Davis to grades one to three, was a night, our athletic director and Mr. Wolf had student-athlete parent information night, where kind of gave an overview of the athletic program, policies, procedures, and then the parents went into individual meetings with their child's coaches. The Mullen had a picnic, the Mullen picnic on the 23rd, which was well-attended, received some positive emails on that. I think Principal Rossi and the Mullen staff, they did a nice job welcoming back the students, which really, I think, set the stage for a very positive opening day. We had a great opening day with the faculty and support staff, some of our school committee members were there, the mayor did a wonderful job getting every, kicking off the message about the support of the city and city council in the community, how they really rally behind our school system. In addition to that, what was really nice is we had about 125 students lining both entrances and clapping for the teachers as they came in, along with our marching band that was playing music. And I just think having the students involved in opening day, and I really want to thank them, because I went around in a short time and met with different students, different teams, and just threw this idea out, and then I met with the high school, and I didn't know how many students were going to volunteer, but a short notice when you have 125 students that volunteered to welcome back their teachers, that, that was just really, really special. And the marching band, which is, you know, they, they helped us, the teachers in the cafeteria, kind of bring everybody into the, we marched them right into the auditorium, which was, which was pretty awesome. And then really, we, that opening day, we focused on teachers, you know, Noni Olsen and Nancy Earls and Jay Aspedano were all really the key aspects of recognizing teachers in their efforts, and it was just a great opening day, and I think it led to a lot of positive vibes and energy for the week. Opening week, the Brezner hand, just some key aspects that went on, the Brezner, they did their PBIS kickoff assembly, so they had all grades one to three students in the fieldhouse, which I also attended, and they did a great job, because they had every student in their gym area all paying attention and following along with the PBIS model, so it was very nice to see. The NOK, I visited the classrooms there, they were doing icebreakers, team building, building marshmallow towers, and I got to eat the marshmallows that they didn't use, which is always a good thing. No, I didn't, I'm just teasing, I wanted to, well. And then the Mullen, PBIS also, they tied in PBIS, they're going to be calling it the NOK Advantage, and then PBIS through the Mullen, days was the Mullen Way, so the NOK Advantage and the Mullen Way, which is pretty, pretty neat. I mentioned, and I forwarded some pictures of the student-led rally at the high school, I had the opportunity to address the entire student party, which was great, and that was student-led, where students were recognizing other students from teams, the band, performing arts, it was great, it was a great way to kick off, kick off the school year, and when I went out and visited classrooms day, everyone's still smiling, so we must have done something right that first week. But what I thought was really important, I, I received a lot of emails, and I reached out to the principals to, you know, where I can share, you know, obviously I'm not going to share the students, but just some of the flavor of the emails that we were getting from parents. This was an email sent, I believe this is at the Mullen, "I hope, hope that you enjoyed your summer, I just wanted to thank you for such a fantastic picnic last night, it was so well-organized, we are so excited about working with this teacher's name and the rest of the team, the teacher is going to be a great fit for our daughter, thanks again for all you do." This was one from a staff member, and I'm mentioning the opening day, but it was really about the students here. "Hello Superintendent Gallagher, I want to say how much I enjoy, you know, the, your energy and the opening day remarks, and I love the band, the serenade was such a fun surprise and made walking in that first morning uplifting, it really put a huge smile on my face and set a tone for a great day, I look forward to seeing you and working with you this coming year." Here's another one, this is to a teacher, "I just wanted to thank you for a great start to the school year and all the work," this is actually to a principal, "then preparing for the kids and make them feel welcomed. I could tell you that my son had, I could tell you that my son had a great transition back to school, because he came home happy and calm, and I hope you have a nice long weekend, thank you for all you do." And then just one more, I mean, I received a lot of these, I just selected these. "Good evening," this is after the first couple days, I wanted, this is to a teacher, "I wanted to write and say thank you for a great first day, my son came home so excited to share all of your stories, he loves nature, he loves museums, you also made him feel special by having him stand up and take a bow for remembering snack time." I wish I had this teacher, I never would have forgot snack time. "These are the connections that are meaningful to him and will help him succeed, thank you very much." And then this is the last one, this is a middle school parent, "Hope you enjoyed your summer, and the transition back to school has gone smoothly, I met with the majority of the team last week regarding my son and daughter, they were polite, engaging, and professional, I think we used the time wisely, and we all left the meeting with a sense of accomplishment. As I mentioned, we have found over the years, by meeting with the team of professionals, working with our children early on, opens the line of communication, and makes sure the school year goes much smoother for all involved, thanks again to you and the grade eight team, that specific team." So, as I said, we received a lot of these type of emails from our principals, and that's kind of what it's all about, and that was our goal, I think, for that first week, is to really have a smooth open, or as smooth as you can for opening of school, and I thought those emails from parents were spot on. And that's my superintendent's report.
Thank you.
I just have one question, do we not have a choice, students?
We do.
We do, I'm just, there's nothing in that column.
One, choice?
On the attendance?
On the enrollment?
The enrollment, the choice columns, what?
Oh, that must, I'm sorry, that must...
That's where those 35 kids are.
Yeah, that's right.
We're going too great for it.
That was a question I had, do we have a sense of where there were 75, 75 and 95?
I think those choice figures just moved over, but I'll find out, I'll give...
I'm just curious if it wasn't, but there is, it's only handed, right, it was only in, like, 13, something like that?
Yeah, I think so, we had...
Nine and five?
Yeah, something like that. And they were fluctuating during the summer, we'd have a full, and then a few would make another choice, and...
October 1st is the one that counts.
That's the one that counts, yeah, October 1st, that, but I can make sure we get the choice, I think we just moved them in to the enrollment.
Do we have any subcommittee reports? Do we have scheduled meetings? Joy had it scheduled for next, I think that's 16?
We're working on finance in a couple weeks.
Okay.
Do we have a date?
Probably the 19th.
Do we have a...
Got a trip with Nancy. I mean, just back to the 26th, I don't know.
I assume not. Right, so we're not planning on having a submission to the committee question? No, I think that we know that we've got two committees that are going to be standing committees, and let's, let's keep this conversation going. Seems like we, by consensus, agreed to sort of...
Disband.
Disband CIE.
I'll try so that Angela can go over reporting, then.
Right. With the understanding that, you know, some of these things, we'll give...
These things are terrible, I'm sorry.
There's nothing else, huh?
Motion to adjourn, Senator.
Well, it was in favor. Is there any discussion on that?